Paul, the October 11, 2021 meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. And would you kindly drumming the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is approval of minutes. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Chair Hall will make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 13, 2021, public hearing and September 13, 2021, regular meeting.
Have a second. Discussion? Now, do any, all in favor, state members saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay. Citizen comment? Anyone to comment on an item that's not on the agenda? Mr. Hall, give me five minutes.
It's two minutes and 20 seconds, I think I timed it.
You timed it? Okay.
Yeah. My name is Ken Hall, and I'm a 36-year resident and business person here in the village. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. In the light of recent new construction in the village, I would like to ask the board to please consider some kind of review committee for new construction and major exterior renovations within the historic village district. Let me explain. As the name and official designation implies, this is an area set aside to protect and preserve its historic nature. Three of my interpretations of this are feel, appearance, and aesthetics. Currently, there is nothing in place to address these, and any type, look, or height of building can go up as long as it complies with zoning and codes, leaving structures built and renovations made that are completely without the feel, appearance, and aesthetics of a 200-year-old village on the National Register of Historic Places. Please let me present this scenario. Duffy's Tavern, an icon of Bolzberg, is sold. The new owners from out of town decide to tear down the original roof and replace it with a flat party deck, complete with a bar, fire pits, big screen TVs, all towering over the diamond. As it is now, that could happen. Board of Supervisors, as stated, please consider establishing a committee to review all future plans related to any new construction or major exterior renovation within the village district. Rather than a HARB, Historic Architectural Review Board, that mandates, this committee could be an advisory group that could lend suggestions and guidance to property owners. This advice could help guide and encourage the property owner to do the right thing, to design a project in which its appearance and aesthetics would be sensitive to and match up with the prevailing historic architectural nature of a nationally designated historic district, not something suited for a modern urban district. Thank you.
Thank you. Two minutes and 20 seconds, you're close here. Anyone else? Okay. I want to make a few comments about the post-moment of bulk waste. This was brought to my attention after the fact, and I was very concerned about it. But following a discussion with the COG Executive Director and the recycling trash program, it became rather apparent quickly that waste management was not keyed up to do bulk waste. They did not have the personnel in State College to do it. They would have had to bring people from different districts. And sadly, they say their vaccination rate amongst all their employees is very, very low. So after all this was brought to light, I tended to agree with the decision. It's not going to be dropped altogether, it's being postponed, so keep an eye on the paper. We hope probably a couple weeks, maybe a little bit toward the end of this month. So it should be scheduled again. Don't throw your good stuff away yet. That's where we are in that one, so. Okay, anyone else? Approval of minutes? Approval of agenda? This is an item that allows fellow supervisors to add an item to the agenda that is not on.
We have one item to add this evening.
Okay. It's part of Act 65, which is part of the new legislation coming from Harrisburg. We have one new one?
Yeah, we have a request to use the Bolzberg Fire Police for traffic control for the chicken barbecue at the Lions Club. It says chicken feed, I don't think they meant that.
Okay, okay. Add that to the end?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. Township business?
Denny, you need to vote on.
We need to vote on.
Oh, okay. All in favor of the amendment to the agenda? State members saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Need a motion.
We didn't call it, did we?
No.
I'll make the motion, I can do that.
I'll second it.
He seconded it, we got it, okay. Township business? Amy, are you doing that, or are they doing it online?
Aye.
Wait, yeah.
Aye.
Okay.
We voted, then we made the motion.
Is this one being done online, or are you doing this one?
Todd is online, so if Todd unmutes himself, he can actually do this one for us, he just did.
On July 7 of this year, staff received from Pentera Engineering a preliminary plan, a land development plan for the industrial car property adjacent to Discovery Drive that proposes to provide additional parking for an existing building and to provide amended stormwater management on the property to allow for a portion of the lot to be better prepared for future development. Staff has completed three reviews of the plan, the third of which was included with the agenda, as well as copies of the plan. Very few comments remain to be addressed. As instance, a preliminary plan, the Planning Commission reviewed the project at their August meeting and expressed some concern about internal traffic flow. That address has been concerned, or that concern has been addressed by the applicant in the manner suggested by the Planning Commission. Staff's recommendation is to move to approve the Lot 1, RRR Units 3 and 4 preliminary land development plan contingent upon satisfactory completion of all outstanding comments from the September 23, 2021 memo of the principal planner, the September 23, 2021 letter of the zoning officer, and the September 24, 2021 letter of the township engineer.
Senator Hall, some move. Second? Second. Discussion? None? All in favor, state members saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
For those of you in the audience that can't see this, this deals with the Discovery Drive property, and near the three buildings that sit there, they're putting more parking in down into that complex. Near where the AAW book drop used to be, in that section, so that's what this is, so. Pretty tough to see it on screen, so. Okay. Okay. 2022 police budget. Amy, you want to introduce? John, and you can go from there?
State College Police Chief John Gardner is present to discuss the 2022 police budget. The chief is recommending we contract for 76 hours of service per week at an hourly rate of $110.65 per hour. He's recommending those hours be split as follows: 20 hours for scheduled patrol, 14 hours for traffic and selective enforcement, 30 hours for complaint response and specific assignments, and 12 hours for detective and community relations crime prevention services. Township is currently contracting for 76 hours of service per week at a rate of 127.51 an hour. We ask for those hours to be broken down as 20 hours for traffic enforcement, 14 for routine patrol, 30 for complaint response, and 12 hours of detective and community relations crime prevention services. So, John, if you want to come to the podium, and I'll get your presentation up.
Mind if I take this off? You'll hear me better. You'll hear me better that way. Okay. First of all, I want to thank you for hosting me again. It's always a joy and a pleasure to come down here and present the budget. I know I enjoy it as much as our officers enjoy policing down here, and I can see from the people who showed up here tonight, it means a lot to them as well, too, so thank you so much. Any further ado, Amy, if you want to go ahead. Okay. I'm not going to read this, but I just want to show you, this is our mission statement, the highlighted blue areas are something that are very near and dear to us. Basically, we're committed to being responsive to our community. Our mission is to improve the quality of life in all of our jurisdictions through a community partnership, and we endeavor to identify and reduce citizens' concerns regarding criminal activity, neighborhood deterioration, and continual nuisances. Basically, what that means is if you've got a problem, you've got an issue, you call us, we'll try to deal with it, we'll try to help you with that, so. Excellent. Those are the key points which I just went over there again. Committed to being responsive to the community, mission is to improve quality of life, and we endeavor to identify and reduce citizens' concerns. Our vision statement is this, I think this is important, State College Police Department is committed to highest standards of professional ethics, exceptional performance, and the pursuit of excellence in everything we do, are committed to the principles of community-oriented policing and of being the most progressive, innovative, and professional police department in our endeavors. These are our core values, and we stand by these. Honor, which is important, and we will lead exemplary lives, and that goes for both on and off duty. Honesty and integrity, we do what's right, we do what's legal, we do what's ethical, and we do what's moral. Professionalism through all our actions, behavior, and performance, and respect the dignity of every individual we encounter. We're big on responsibility and accountability, and we must be faithful in those responsibilities. And in wellness, we take care of ourselves, our coworkers, and our families. This is our organizational chart, and you may not be able to see it a little bit, but I just think it's important that you see the makeup of the department and a little bit, you know, over the past year or so, you've heard a lot of things hurled about police in general across this country, and I think it's important that the folks here in Harris Township understand the people who are actually policing your community. We are authorized right now for 60 sworn positions. We currently have three vacancies, that's due to three recent retirements, Officer Deirdre Houck, Officer Mike Mamlin, and Lieutenant Keith Robb, who just recently retired. So a little bit about, you've heard a lot of disparity about police officers not being trained and being ill-equipped to do things. I think it's important to see, 72% of our officers have a college degree, of which 21% are master's degrees. 28% of our people are military veterans, 56% of those veterans have a college degree. 12 of our 13 supervisors have at least a bachelor's degree, and five have master's degrees. Six administrative supervisors have command school training, which is like FBI National Academy or Northwestern School of Command. 17% of our officers are female. That's the first time in the history of the police department we've been in double digits with females, so we're very proud of that. 9% of the supervisors are female, 29% of detectives are female, and our breakdown of our demographics, we have one Native American, one Hispanic, one Pacific Islander, and one African-American officer. So those are the things that we had heard over the past couple of years that we need to get better at, and things that we're continuing to work on, but we're very proud of that. That organizational chart, we've been vacant a captain in patrol for the past year with the retirement of Captain Chris Fischel. I've been given the authorization to fill that position, and we're going to be doing that probably before the end of the year. Assistant Chief Matt Wilson's been doing yeoman's duty, doing both administrative work and the patrol division, so we're excited about getting that position filled. As I stated earlier, Lieutenant of Patrol Keith Robb has retired, so we're going to be interviewing to get that position filled, so there's a lot of moving parts here. Over the past nine months, we've hired nine new officers. So some of them in varying degrees, some are in our field training program, some are still in the academy, so what that means when we say we have 57 officers, operationally we don't, because they can't operate on independent themselves, so it's a work in progress. We are replacing those officers as quickly as we can. We have just recently begun testing, and we hope to have a new list for new officer hires by the end of the year, so that we can begin hiring the replacements for the three vacancies we have right now. Our goals and objectives, again, these very rarely change from year to year. We want to reduce crime through crime prevention initiatives. We want to improve traffic safety in our jurisdictions. We want to improve the safety of our downtown areas and our neighborhoods. We want to reduce unreasonable noise in the neighborhoods at night, improve police professionals through training. We do tons of training, and so we're on the cutting edge in a lot of that. And obviously, we want to promote diversity, equity, and inclusivity in all of our communities. This is just, I just want to touch base again, you know, when you see a police officer, you know, a lot of times people think just numbers and arrests and statistics, but I think there's a lot of things behind it I think the citizens need to be aware of. Some notable trainings we did in 2020 and 2021, you can read them there. Certifications and recertifications of our lethal, less lethal, and tactics training. We have in-house instructors that teach those things, like firearms instructors and less lethal instructors. We had two officers become drug recognition experts, or DREs as we call them. They are now trained that they can get impaired drivers off the road who are not under the influence of alcohol, but possibly drugs, so they're trained to do that. We have several detectives who are trained in cell phone forensic, so they can take a phone and get information out of that phone that might otherwise be locked, that have helped us prosecute child sexual predators, and whatever, whatever the case may be, where we get information that aids in the prosecution. Again, bicycle, police bicycle and bicycle response training. We're looking now with the retirement of Mike Mamlin, he was our last mix-up or motor carrier safety assistance officer, so we're looking, we're posting up for interest because it's very important, and it's especially for a township like Harris when you have a lot of big trucks coming through here. And not only with the noise, but you want to make sure that those are safe to be on the roads, and so it's very important we get that training up. Obviously, we have hosties negotiator in our department who have to be certified every year. We continue to do our diversity, anti-bias, and inclusivity training. We're our real race equity and leadership training, our school resource officer training that we have. We've now, in terms of internal affairs investigations, we're in the process of training every lieutenant on how to conduct proper internal affairs investigation, should we ever, and do sometimes, get complaints about officers, so. And then again, cannabis or marijuana impaired driving training, and field training officer certification, emergency vehicle or EVOC instructor training, those are just some of the trainings that we've touched on in 20 and 21. Some of the accomplishments of 2021 are, you know, we've been an accredited agency now, we had our fifth successful reaccreditation assessment, we're very proud of that. Our victim-centered intensive case management, or our domestic violence unit, which has been in existence since 2006, we had that grant renewed, so it's 15 years ago, and that's almost unheard of, but that detective provides service to all of our localities, or all of our jurisdictions, and any other police department that may need assistance. One of our detectives, Chris Albrecht, has been assigned to an FBI task force, and what that means is she's now has a security clearance where she can work with the FBI, can work cases, and has access to all of their databases and whatever that can aid them in, and aid for local investigations as well, so that we can use their resources. Obviously, the past year, we had quite a year with mediation of protests of many sorts and kinds throughout the year, and we were able to pull those off without too many issues. Obviously, 2020 was filled, you know, everybody's life was turned upside down by COVID-19 and all the protection protocols that were into place, and obviously had a chilling effect on businesses and communities and what have you. So those are some of the things that really occupied most of our time. One of the things I think some of you may know, we underwent an assessment review of our police department by the International Association of Chiefs of Police, who come in, it was soon after the shooting that we were involved in, and they looked at all of our policies, practices, and procedures, and they come up, they said, the bulk of it was basically, you have a pretty good police department, but here are 47 things, and nothing major, that we think that you could strengthen in your policies or whatever, or reward, or what have you. So we've been doing that, there's a presentation we're going to make on that to Borough Council, I believe, on November 4th, so we're pretty excited about that. I just want to point out that Detective Steve Bozek, who was named Center County Law Enforcement Officer of the Year for a lot of his work, and some of you may not know that over the past year, through Steve's work and through using DNA genealogy, we were able to solve two very serious cases. One last year involved a serial rapist who committed four rapes over a period from 2010, 11, and 2017. And through the genetic profile we had from that individual, and working through genetic genealogy, we were able to identify that individual, and he's now sitting in jail waiting a trial or what have you. The second one, the most recent one, was a 26-year-old case. It involved a young Penn State co-ed at the time in 1995, was walking home and was brutally beaten and brutally raped, and was almost left for dead. In fact, she still has many issues, she suffers from that today. But through the same process, the, and I have to give a shout out to two, you know, Steve Bozek did a great job with this, but I have to go back to 1995, and there were two forward-thinking people at that particular time. One is Detective Tom Jordan, who's now, you know, the magistrate down here in Center Hall, and former DA Ray Greecar, who had the foresight to look ahead and said, you know, we know this DNA stuff can identify people, we can't take it and identify anybody right now. So what they ended up doing was getting a John Doe warrant, basically of that genetic profile of that individual. And it was put into a database, and we did much the same thing again. As DNA became more, you know, active, and we had the ability to use it, we did the same thing by going out and going to a lot of these genealogy sites, and we were able to match that individual, and he was just, we just arrested him last Tuesday, and he sits in jail right now. Long overdue, 26 years. And then we have the completion of our body worn camera project, which every police officer in State College now has a body worn camera, which is, I think, is really relieving to them because it, well, it doesn't, you know, it's not a panacea for everything. It gets to the point where we have what they're dealing with from that perspective, and we have that so that if questions come up, we have that video footage. Excellent. As I said, I talked a little bit of some of our companies, we did hire nine officers, three are currently in the academy, two are graduated from the academy, and four previously had Act 120 certification, which we put them into the field training program. We've revamped our recruiting process, and again, we're establishing a new eligibility list. We promoted one new lieutenant, that was Sergeant Ted Hubler, two lieutenant and two sergeants. Officer Ken Schaefer to sergeant, and Officer John Tulumak to sergeant. We selected a new community relations officer, which is Officer Dean Woodring, so you'll probably be seeing him around the township a lot as we start doing some community relations things. We did, we made numerous public presentations to council over a myriad of issues. We were able to re-up our DUI pedestrian and school bus enforcement grants. We achieved speed reductions in high crash areas. A couple of them, you know, down here and over the past couple of years, was Route 45 on Shingle Town there, and then the 322 from the township into, yeah, the corridor there, so. And we had an officer, Kevin Orndorf, who was honored with a DUI Top Gun Award, has been one of the top DUI enforcement officers in the area, in the state. So we're very proud of those. Notable responses and investigations of 2021, lifesaving response to the State College house fire. We had five officers that saved the life of a woman, five officers and a Public Works employee who went in there and risked their lives to pull a woman out of a house fire. So we're very proud of that. They were given commendations, lifesaving awards, and medals of valor for responses to several life-threatening situations. Bolzberg Home Invasion robbery arrest we made last year, where two individuals were arrested for that. We had a Spring Creek incident, exposure of children arrest, College Township Home Improvement fraud arrest, Mountain View Road and Township Drug Ring arrest, heroin, meth, and amphetamine and cocaine, and arrests made in two cold, as I described earlier, two cold case rape investigation using genetic genealogy. Upcoming trainings for this year, obviously, diversity, anti-bias, and inclusivity training. We're going to have school resource officer training again, training for a crash reconstructionist, which is extremely important. We, again, Mike Mamlin was our mix-up officer, he was also our last accident reconstructionist, so that remains a priority for it right now. We're going to be sending some officers to Community Relations and Crime Prevention Symposium, first-line supervisors training for all the newly promoted supervisors, supervisor professional development training. Obviously, I mentioned Mix-Sap, which is the motor carrier safety program, and then protection, personal protection, control, and defense instructor classes, civilian leadership training, and various forensic and crime investigation training. I guess the point I'm trying to make is, when you see a police officer, there's so much more going on behind the scenes than people actually see in the public. So when you hear people say, well, the police aren't equipped to do this, and the police aren't equipped to do that, we undergo a lot of training. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to make sure that the officers we put on the street are able and equipped to deal with almost anything they come into contact with. Obviously, we want to promote community diversity, equity, and inclusion. Some of the things that we're involved in, obviously, I was a member of the Task Force on Policing in Communities of Color, and you can see what our goals were there. It's very important work that continues, and I'm going to be a continual member on that task force. Also, we have in State College, the Neighborhood Coalitions, where we meet monthly with those neighborhoods to talk and discuss what issues and concerns they may have. Something I think that, you know, we're not opposed if you wanted to do it down here. I'm going to pitch the same thing to College Township. A lot of times, we get a lot of good ideas from just listening and talking to the citizens in that setting. Obviously, we still, since 2014, we've been members of Community and Campus in Unity, which is all the police departments, police chiefs, university, where we talk about issues of real concern to our communities, and we meet once monthly on that. And then we've also begun meeting with the State College NAACP chapter as well. So getting back now, we're getting to numbers now. So total calls for police services, this includes Part 1 and Part 2 crimes, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. So if you can see those, which I'm not really sure I can, but you can see for the 2020, 2021 year, you had 1,601 calls for service, up from the 2019 and 2020, which was 1414, which obviously, that was, you know, a lot of COVID-type things which impacted, but over the course of the last five years, you can see where calls for service have remained kind of pretty steady down here. So I would anticipate those calls to be in that 1,600, or, you know, slightly higher in the coming year as people get out and become more active and, you know, and doing things, so. But that's just to give you a little indicator of where you've been and where you see where calls for service have been. Crimes may have been a little down, but the calls for service have not been. These are Part 1 crimes and Part 2 crimes from January 1, 2020 through December 2020. As you can see from those, the Part 1 crimes are the more serious crimes. You had, in that time period of 2020, you had two robberies down here, you had nine total assaults, which were simple assaults, and 35 thefts. All in all, pretty safe. Part 2 crimes were the biggest things, were frauds and criminal mischiefs and disorderly conducts. So again, and I think you'll see somewhat similar when we go to the next slide, it shows January 21 through August of 2021. It's the same thing. Fraud being the big thing, and what you're seeing right now, and I think we contribute Fraud being the big thing and what you're seeing right now, and I think we contribute that too. You're seeing a lot more of these internet or online email type things where they try to get people to, you know, to buy into these things. You know, if you do this or, you know, do that. So what we say is don't fall victim to that. If there's a doubt, don't ever click links, don't ever give information out over the phone and what have you. The second thing that we're seeing a lot more of right now, and you may have heard of it, there's a lot of this unemployment compensation fraud that's going around where people are opening up, trying to open up unemployment claims in somebody else's name. They get somebody's information and they start using that. So if there's a question, anybody has a question about that, please call us on that. We've dealt with that a lot. So overall, if you look at these numbers, you're pretty safe here in Harris Township. Enforcement programs for Harris Township, obviously, officers conduct 179 traffic enforcement stops for violations other than DUI. The Strategic Traffic Enforcement Plan identifies the top locations to target enforcement actions. So that's based on the activity we see, crashes and speeding and red lights and things like that. That's where we focus our efforts at. And then also by using speed sensory data collection and compliance enhancement, like the radar speed signs, you might see them around the townships. A lot of times the manager will call us and say, hey, I'm getting complaints about speeding in this location, and we'll put the speed sensor out there. And what it'll do, do one of two things. It'll tell us, yeah, we have a problem, or no, maybe it was just a perception thing. But we collect that data and we have it, and that's how we make decisions. And obviously collaborative efforts on traffic calming with the Township and PENDOT. And then our aggressive driving grant through PENDOT provides manpower to specifically target violations. Strategic, our STEP program in Harris, obviously, this shouldn't be, you know, these are the locations and these are the violations you're going to see. Atherton at Shingle Town, there's the violations we most commonly see, speeding, red lights and turns, 5,800 block of Mount Nittany, and then SR 22 near Jack's Mill, same thing, speeding, and then the following two closely through that stretch of road there. And then East Bowl, sorry, Amy, and then East Bowl.
Okay, I can't make it.
Okay, well, you have it anyhow, but it's, those are the locations where you have most of the issues and then it tells you what they're. So crash information for Harris Township in the past year, the fiscal, from 9/1/2020 through 8/31/2021, you had total crashes of 68. That was up six from the prior period. Reportable crashes, you had 33, which was down three. Injury crashes, you had 16 with 26 total injuries. DUI-related crashes, you had seven. You had zero fatalities, zero bike and pedestrian crashes, and private property crashes were five. And these are mostly like parking lot type accidents, backing into vehicles and things like that. Aggressive driving violations continue to be the top crash contributors and following two closely, safe speeds, red light violations. And then our top crash locations in Harris Township over that period of September of 20 through August of 21, obviously, it's Atherton and Street at Shingle Town Road where we had seven. East Bowl, the state Route 322 corridor, we had 11. And East Bowl Avenue and Barametto is four. East Bowl Avenue and Earlystown Road, four. Which, you know, when you look at those numbers, those are significantly lower. And I think part of it is, I'd like to say that people are driving more safely, but I think you have to look over that period of time. I don't know if people were out driving a lot like they were. So that's something we're going to have to look at as we move forward into the new year. So, but rest assured, we'll be keeping an eye on that. And then you talked about the hours and the rates. We think that we can continue to provide the service here for 76 hours a week. One of the things you may have noticed when Ms. Farkas mentioned it, what the rate was before and what it's going to be now, it's lower this year. And it's obviously because of one factor and one factor only, and I've talked to Mr. Hammester about that, and that's the fact that our foreign casualty money, which, you know, which pays for police pensions, was such that our pension fund now is overfunded. So that savings gets passed on to the townships and the borough as well. So my point is this, it's nice that we're giving you police service for $110 this year. I'm just saying, don't get used to that because it may change next year. Thank you for partnering with us and for a safe community. As I said earlier, I love coming down here. I know our officers love providing services here in the township, and we appreciate anything and everything that you folks, you know, give back to us. We heard from many citizens down here about how they appreciated the police, and that's well, that's well taken, and we really appreciate that, so.
Open up the question, John. So anyone have inquiries, accolades, good points, bad points? Jack?
Accolades, especially for Steve Bozek, Dave White, and other guys up there. But I had a question about defunding. Were you guys affected by that at all, except for Denny's budget?
You mean in terms of?
The defunding movement. Has your department been affected?
Well, last year, we fought that battle last year where we, they were, we were funded for 60 officers. We'd had 62 in the past. We were hiring that before. We had 65 at our high point, and that was several years back, long before I took over as chief. But we had 62 that, and we had, we were, the proposal last year was for 58, but council, our council put two positions back in, so we're at 60 right now. We continue to fight that battle. Is that I am in no way, shape, or form in support of trying to defund police. I think if you look at all the things we do here, I mean, it's more than just statistics and arrests and things like that, it's all the things we do. So in order to do that and provide the level of service that everybody's used to, you can't, you can't cut police.
This is the 23rd or 24th year for contract with State College.
Oh, it's more than that, Danny.
1982.
Yeah, 82 or 81, yeah. It's 40 years.
I was thinking of Tom King's tenure.
What's that?
We hired him.
Yeah.
Mary?
Yeah. Thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you.
But I have a question as a concerned citizen. I'm a resident of Linden Hall, and on Linden Hall Road, we have a rental property that has had three fires and all kinds of stuff going on at this one residence. What do we do as a concerned citizen? They've had three fires. Two of them have been on the ground and one was a building, an outbuilding. And the residents are still there with all kinds of clutter and all kinds of stuff going on. It's kind of scary.
Well, my first suggestion is call College Township because it's College Township property. But the issue is live.
Yeah, it's here. Yeah, okay.
I would just say this to you, if you have an issue in the township here that troubles you, your first move is call us. And if we can't do something about it, we'll find you somebody that can do something about it. Obviously, sometimes like that, is there anything suspicious about it or?
Yeah.
They also provide free service to College Township, so same chief, same issue.
Yeah, so, but what I'm, I really want to emphasize that if you have issues or concerns, you know, you call us.
Interesting. I do the calculation of the budget. Our current per day cost for police services is 25 and a half cents per person in Harris Township. Yearly is about $91 or $92. It's going to go down because of that reduction in cost, but 25 and a half cents a day for 24/7 coverage. All the officers have advanced life support in the back of the vehicles. So if you have a family member that has an emergency, a heart attack, the squad car is most likely going to arrive before the ambulance. So you've got wonderful service. And we've seen that work a couple of times in Linden Hall.
One slide there, not only the house fire they pulled people out, but we saved two lives. One was an arterial bleed by us getting there and putting a tourniquet on, a young man who was inebriated. And the second one was a man who had a heart attack. I believe it was down here in Harris, too. But we ended up doing CPR and shocked him with the AED, and he's here with us today.
Good service. Others? We will be voting on the budget October 30th.
No, your first budget meeting is October 27.
Okay. It's on the budgets, it's on the calendar. So we'll vote on that and then get right back to you because you need to get it into the municipal budget. Questions of my colleagues?
Sure. A couple of things I'd like to do, and the one question I have for you, Chief, is, and I think that you guys do such a fabulous job training and recruiting people. I think the people need to hear, how, to replace three officers, ballpark, how many applications are you going to need of quality officers to do that?
Well, see, here's the first, here's the real problem with that, Frank. Obviously, the numbers are not, everybody's experiencing a numbers crunch across law enforcement all over the place. So to give you an example, we just tested five, six times, four in State College and one in Harrisburg and one in Erie area. We got 103 people that took our test. That's not very many. Now, back in the stone ages, when I tested in 1990, we had over 900 people test at that particular point. That's 30, 31 years ago. So that's the first challenge you have right now. Every law enforcement agency in the country is experiencing that. But, so to answer your question, we have three openings right now. We're hoping as we go through all our process here, we come up with a list of about 30. And out of that 30, we're hoping we can, we can maybe end up as the openings, you know, those openings and others, we might be able to hire maybe eight, you know?
Yeah. My point is that it's not, you just don't hire somebody walking. It's a, it's a long draw process, and you do a very good job of screening guys. I think the quality of our police department we have is great, and for $437,000 a year, I don't think we could, we could create that here in the township and even come close for that number. So I like that. But my only comment, and you know, you, see, every year we talk about this 20 patrol and, so I would like to have more, you know, I always want to have more traffic than less.
I understand. Here's the thing, that's just there for general, we don't, we're not married to that. If you, if Amy calls me and says, hey, I want, I want more enforcement over here, we're going to do that.
See, I would, I would like to see if, you know, your guys are coming out on patrol, even if it was a patrol, set along 45 between Crummies and Wassens, you know, set in there somewhere where you're visible, that people will slow down. Or even on Main Street, where we have, up above Main Street, where the people like to fly down through there. So, you know, I don't have a problem with patrol, but let's, you know, put it where, and I'll always have that comment.
Oh, I know. And I hear you, and it's a point well taken as well.
How are we doing on relocation up to the end of this year, John?
You're, you're in good shape right now, so.
Sure plus the deficit.
You're under.
Good.
Yeah, so.
Other questions? We'll get back to you at the end of the month, John.
I appreciate it. Always a pleasure. Thank you so much.
Have a good day. Okay. The Bowl Avenue Road Diet, Amy and McCormick Taylor crew?
Yep, I'll start and then Rob can jump in. In 2016, the Small Area Plan identified a possible road diet for Bowl Avenue with the goals of improving the functionality of Bowl Avenue while balancing the needs of pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. Specifically, the plan envisioned shrinking the travel lanes on Bowl Avenue between the Military Museum and the intersection with Route 45 East to two lanes with a bike lane added on one side of the road. In 2018, the Township and its traffic engineer, Mr. Rob Watts from McCormick Taylor, started the process of completing a feasibility study for the project. The study, which was reviewed by PENDOT, had two phases. The first phase addressed the question of if we could take away one traffic lane on Bowl Avenue and still have good traffic flow. The second phase provided plan view illustrations of the road diet concept. The road diet was found to be operationally feasible by PENDOT. The feasibility study was presented to the board in June of 2020 for feedback. Since that time, staff has met with PENDOT to find out if they support the project moving forward. They have been very lukewarm toward the idea, claiming there is no public support for the project. We did a public open house tonight, and we also have all the materials on our website and have a public comment form on our website. And once we get back, all the comments from the public, we'll provide those with the public, with, to PENDOT and the board to discuss further. So Rob is here. Rob and I don't think you probably want a PowerPoint presentation on this because you've heard this 16 times, but he will address some things and answer any questions that you might have.
Hello, Rob. Thank you. Thank you for having me once again, and thank you for all of you who came out tonight, provided your input, who listened to us talk about the road diet for a little while. As Amy mentioned, we do, we are keeping the comment period open for this. The materials are on the website to view, all of these boards, the handouts that you received, and an online comment portal through a, we call it Survey Monkey. You can digitally complete your survey that way. Tell your, tell friends who you might know who are interested in this. This is the purpose of why we're doing it here, not to go one way or the other, but to hear what the community wants to do. You know, once a road like Bowl Avenue gets changed, for better, for worse, becomes a part of your community. So we want you to be satisfied with what you're getting and the direction that it's ultimately going. I do have a presentation set up, but like I said, we're not going to do it. Just how we got here, the Small Area Plan, if you haven't looked at that document, some of you who are here actually participated in that process, the road diet came out of that study, and it really supports a lot of the goals that are listed in that plan. If you'd like to know why a road diet was recommended in the first place, I'd send you there. What we've done here is kind of say, hey, if we could do it, what's the result and what might it look like? That's what these illustrations are and the traffic analysis that we've done to say that it's operationally feasible. It may, however, not be desired by the community. If it is, if it isn't, we'd like to hear from you. We really do need that input. PENDOT has kind of throwed the gauntlet out there. They've thrown the gauntlet out and said, we don't believe there's support for this. And maybe they're right, but maybe they're not. This meeting and this effort is to try to get that input. So as much as we can get through the website, as much as we can get tonight, we'll go very far to answering the question, figuring out where we go next with this. It may have legs, it may not be. Both of those are acceptable in the long run. I do want to tell you a little bit about road diets, about Bowl Avenue, and about the reason why this was suggested in the first place, to kind of fill in some of the blanks. Four-lane highways are all over the country, and they're known to have problems. The research has identified them as geometrically having problems. They have crash problems, they have speed problems, and they oftentimes develop into capacity problems as the area around them develops and people start turning on and off of those roadways. You can see that out here on Bowl Avenue when a left turner gets in that inside lanes and vehicles shoot out around them or they have to come to a quick stop behind them. Just tonight, we had a left turner and a right turner right next to each other, and I nearly got rear-ended in the right lane. So the speeds are high, sometimes the expectation is not there, people are trying to get to where they want to go. The road diet has been around for a while, and there's a lot of research that says it reduces crashes. It reduces speed. They tend to increase delay moderately, and they do tend to increase what we call queues, the way the vehicles stack at intersections. And our analysis bears that out. We're not here to sugarcoat any of that. There are, there are some various trade-offs here. With the way the township and this region is investing in active transportation infrastructure, micro-mobility, you've seen more bikes, you've seen more people walking, and there's probably been more demand for that. I know the board has seen that. There are more facilities being built around here. I know an area that I'm most familiar with is up at Harvest Fields, they're developing trails up on the mountain to use that land by bicyclists. And so you probably see some of those bikers going back and forth. It's the goal of the region, it's the goal of the township to try to provide for that kind of traffic on Bowl Avenue. Bowl Avenue has been identified by the Center Region in their bike plan as a recommended bike corridor, along with Earlystown Road. So making these connections where there aren't any right now or providing those facilities is something that the Small Area Plan is trying to deal with, and this study is also trying to deal with. Where the study stands right now, it's done. We've shown you what could happen, what it would look like. We have that lukewarm, PENDOT has accepted it, they agree that it's operationally feasible, but we do need to answer the question of whether or not it's supported in this community. We do think there are good things, we think there are some trade-offs. We would appreciate your help in deciding whether or not it's something you want here in the community. So with that, I will take some questions if you have any remaining after you had a chance to look at this. Like I said, these are still available for you to look at over the next week, week and a half.
Change? Jack?
Of course, anything that will reduce. I've noticed since I was walking during the COVID problems, traffic is higher, denser, or high-speed and denser. And anything that will calm the traffic, in my mind, is going to save.
Interesting changes. Could be made on that, on that highway.
I agree.
Your comment period is open now for a while, isn't it, to get things?
We are planning to keep it open through the 22nd of October. That is a Friday, that's about two weeks from now, it's a little less than two weeks. But it should give us plenty of time to receive comments and then, you know, proactively get them moving into the hands of PENDOT in the board.
Can you stretch it another week till the end of October?
We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good, but just a little question, so you mentioned the fact that this is part of our
of our biggest commercial resort zone that we just started. And I noticed that you, and we, I think I got the answers before the slip lane. PennDOT doesn't like slip lanes anymore, coming down of 45 and that right turn lane, we're eliminating that. Is PennDOT not like those anymore, or is that just what, what you think we should have there?
I, I think what we've shown are a couple different options up here for that lane. What we're talking about is the big right turn that comes from Earlystown Road on the Bowle Avenue. Right now, you can come down through there, and you don't have to stop, you don't have to yield, you go right into your own lane. That type of design is much more car-oriented. It was probably built at a time when Bollesburg wasn't maybe as developed. I know Liberty Hill wasn't here, and many of those other developments out through, Kaywood might have been here. But, but yeah, it was, it was a more rural treatment for a rural road and a higher-speed facility. Now, as you've seen with Warner Boulevard and Bowle Avenue, one of those large slip lanes got reduced there, and a right turn lane was put in. We kind of worked off of that and included one of those over here in one of our alternatives. And that actually works pretty well from an operational standpoint.
Because of the green arrow on it. It works well because of the turning arrow.
Because of the way you can do traffic there, you, you take the strong left turn and the strong right turn, and you can have arrows that move that traffic at the same time. That gives you the efficiency.
Let me ask you an interesting question about the blinking yellow arrow.
Yes.
We're finding in Ferguson Township, is it unique to Ferguson, or why is it in Ferguson versus anywhere else?
No, it's a, it's a device called flashing yellow arrow, i- is how it works. It is, it's been studied for a number of years now, and it's been installed in many other states. And they had done research on it. It's found to reduce left turn crashes over the five-section signal heads that have the green arrows and the yellow arrows and whatnot on it. It's found to be more intuitive, and it has more flexibility in how you operate it. Out here at Warner Boulevard, you can only turn when the arrow is green. There is no flashing yellow arrow that comes up there. But if Harris Township would ever want to do flashing yellow arrow, the equipment is in place to do that. So you don't need to swap out signal heads and spend money on new things like that. This one four-section head with flashing yellow arrow handles all of the possible you know, left turn situations you would need at an intersection. So there's an efficiency issue, there's a safety issue, and it, it is becoming more common, although it is a little different around here.
It's Gatesburg Road and Science Park.
Yes. Yes, it's been added there as well. It's been added there.
Interesting.
Denny, we actually, when we were looking at making that change to Warner Boulevard, PennDOT wanted us to do the blinking yellow, the flashing yellow signal, and Rob and I talked about that quite a bit. And my concern was, when that light was put in and we had all the people that were turning, we had all of those crashes, I was like, I don't want to add something that no one's doing really anywhere in our part of the state and have that be, that was the second most unsafe intersection in the county at the time. And I, I didn't want to add that as a layer of like, well, surprise, we're going to try something really new here. So we, like Rob said, we do have the ability to turn that on, we have that infrastructure in already, but, I mean, our crashes are way down at that intersection now, just with what we did.
Well, that Ferguson Township intersection isn't as busy as the one we're doing with here at Warner itself.
Yeah, I would agree, and many of those intersections didn't have the crashes.
Go, go.
To follow up on that, the sight distance, the sight distance is a problem with the Bowle Avenue, Warner Boulevard, Shingle Town Road, that's all there is to it. And so I don't think it's an op, I don't think it'd be a good idea there. And the light cycles relatively quickly, nobody's held up terribly long. And overall, I think the timing on it's pretty good. But there are a couple of other ones. There's another one from Blue Course, left turn from Blue Course Avenue to go up Martin Street, and also in Ferguson Township. It used to be a very frustrating red and perfectly good sight distance, and people couldn't go, and so they switched that to a flashing yellow. But what's interesting though is if you're coming off Warner Boulevard, turning left onto Bowle Avenue to come towards downtown Bollesburg, we have a green arrow, but there's no flashing yellow arrow, it just goes away and the left turn is still legal. So that might be something we'd want to do.
That's the old style, you have the old-style signal heads on the side, you have the new style on, on the main. You're going to see more flashing yellow arrow around the state, it's the direction the state is really pushing right now.
In that particular case, we'd need a new signal head to put a flashing yellow on, at the Warner Boulevard facing.
They don't come to you?
No. No, you.
Next step for you, Rob, with respect to?
What? We, we opted to go with a dedicated bike lane. Does that, are we going to take some land or is it the same, same width as we're, or less width coming as we have now for the highways? It's four, it's four-lane now with curving. Are there's going to be less width or the same width or more width?
It's going to be the same width.
It all fits into the same width?
It was, yeah, the goal of this whole project was to fit it within the existing curb line, so that we wouldn't be moving curbs. Originally, we wanted to do this with a paving project, just repave the road and put the lines back out there. We discovered through the project, it's just not quite that easy, if it were that easy.
So this will limit the race between, between Bowle, between Church Street and Main Street?
Yes, it will.
Yeah, just an example, I travel that corridor sometimes multiple times a day, and I live on the hill, so I'm coming from town. It sure would be nice to have a dedicated left turn lane there, and everybody wants to be in the left lane by that point because it gets funneled over past the light if you want to go straight. So it's very awkward in that midsection between Church Street and Main Street. And so this, this idea, it'll make it a lot safer, calm traffic and reduce, I mean, I don't know how many there have been, but, you know, many years ago, my wife was rear-ended waiting to come home, and pretty badly, and I'm always looking. And fortunately, I haven't, you know, I haven't had to do anything evasive, but I'm ready for it, ready to go straight if something's coming up behind me. And I don't like that, yeah, it's time to floor it and go.
Yeah, the crash, the crashes on Bowle Avenue have not been extreme at, at that intersection, you know, in recent days. I think that's attributed to some of the work the, the township has done with the signal heads and the back plates and different things to, to do whatever they could to improve, to improve the safety. But volume is going to continue to grow and increase, and as that happens, four-lane highways, like I said, are, they're just prone to these issues, and they will get worse as the traffic increases.
It's also very awkward when, if I'm turning left onto the Pike and another car in the opposite direction is trying to turn left onto Church Street, and you just can't see around anything. And so it creates a hazardous, hazardous situation. I'm surprised we haven't had any crashes, but I see that fairly often.
Thankfully, we don't have a lot of trucks on that stretch, because if they get in that inside lane, you can't see the oncoming vehicles in the other lane. You have a lot of really bad crashes that way.
Even just a, a utility van will block your visibility.
They will, an up truck or something like that.
You kind of have to time it, especially if there's a few new vehicles behind it waiting to go straight, for example, in, in either direction. Sight's pretty bad.
Our three signals coordinated all, because they all work independent. Whenever you're lucky, you may get a couple in the vote.
Let me put it this way, the signal permit plans registered with PennDOT say they are supposed to be coordinated. They, as we discovered, are not necessarily coordinated. We discovered when we submitted our traffic analysis, there was a little bit of confusion there, and we think we cleared that up through this project, which is a, which is a good thing. It's a good thing to get that done.
That, that form is available to complete, send it?
This form can be completed tonight. It is on the webpage, it can be printed and filled out. Or we have a, a digital link, a link on the website to a Survey Monkey poll, which is that exact same survey, but all you have to do is do it online. Check your boxes, type a couple notes in there, hit send, it will go into our survey automatically, which I think is the easiest way to go, so I recommend that way.
Good.
Mike? Just a couple things, I, I would like to encourage our, our residents to, to get involved here, because, you know, a lot of times when we're looking at these types of things, whether it's speed limits on roads, trust us, we, we fought many a battle with PennDOT, and it's like, it's like climbing up a hill with no help. So please get on your, get on and fill the form out and send it in, because the one thing I'd like to see from this road diet, regardless of, is the speed reduction, it, it's getting faster and faster down through there, and we have residents that cross at Earlystown Road and Church Street all the time. We have, knock on wood, we haven't had any problems yet, but there's, somebody's going to be going too fast. So I, I really would like to see that if this is going to help us reduce the speed through there. And, you know, some of our traffic that we get through Bollesburg is coming from Center Hall, Lewis Town, people coming into town and going that way. You know, we have, we have a mountain in the expressway. If, if it's too slow during there, they can always get on the expressway and go, so I, I really think that we, we need your support to help make this happen. I would hope you all do that.
Thank you. Others? Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Oh, and?
Sorry, can you, Anne, can you come to the microphone so that CNET picks you up? Anne, can you come to the microphone? It's so CNET picks you up.
You're on TV.
If this diet exercise does not work, could you reverse it, or would you?
Since we're working, since we're working inside the curb line, we're not moving the curb lines, taking away pavement or something like that, it could be converted back or done in a way like a pilot type of thing, it'd be done in a pilot type of way. It, although when all the effort is, is made, it would be a little difficult, it would be costly to turn it back, put it that way.
Reverse diets do work. Bud, anybody else?
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, let's move on to a really exciting, exciting project. Pam Adams is going to not walk us through this whole report, but if you want to see a really well-done report, this is probably the nicest one, and the most professional one I've seen coming out, and I've been at this a long time, there's a beautiful stuff in here, so that's, that's the work of Pam, and you can introduce yourself, and welcome there, Pam.
Thank you for having me. My name is Pam Adams, I'm the Sustainability Planner at the Center Region Planning Agency for COG, and tonight I'm going to give an overview of the Center Region Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. On September 27th, the General Forum, which is the 32 elected officials of the, pretty much State College Area School District, the six municipalities, asked to forward this plan to the municipalities for comments. On the website link there, we also have a place for the public to respond and provide comments as well. I just want to say real quick that this plan was created by many people, and I want to acknowledge all of that. The Public Services Environmental Committee, which were elected officials, got this started. There's currently a Climate Action and Sustainability Committee is now, has the oversight for this. And then those elected officials chose to have a technical advisory group to help assist with this. And there's a lot of people there, I'm sure I've forgotten somebody, but I just want to acknowledge that, and I'm trying to make sure that I do acknowledge everybody. So when we're talking about why we're doing this, I just want to bring this real quick, we've talked about this over the past couple years, but we really have recognized that there's a need to keep the costs under control and make sure we protect our community. And so just recently, Center County had a disaster emergency with the rains in Coburn. So these impacts are now local for us. And if you recall, Harris, Ferguson and the Borough all have resolutions that requested and passed a resolution to create a plan to identify strategies to reduce our emissions. So this process started in 2018 with an objective to create a plan to reduce our emissions and to adapt to the changing climate conditions, and really focus on regional solutions, pragmatic and fiscally responsible. So that was the objective set, and that was in 2018, and then for the past two years, I've been in this position, and we've been looking at seven steps. And I'm happy to say that we're at this milestone number five, where we've got a draft action plan that Denny showed you there, and it's on the website. The plan itself walked through those steps, and the first milestone was creating a greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which we did in 2019. We looked at our emissions for the community based on 2016 data, and we found that our community has 824,000-plus metric tons carbon dioxide equivalents. And you can see that the biggest portion, 67%, is from the energy used to heat and cool our buildings. So that's the biggest emission producer, as well as we looked at transportation, solid waste, land management, water and wastewater. Also in that chapter, we show visually, the graph on the right shows that the 45% reduction, that's the goal that the elected officials passed the resolution last year, July 2020, to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions 45%, that's that white dotted line there. And this plan, all 82 of the actions, can help get us to that reduction. On the left, it shows the six different sectors that we've broken the plan into to try to look at, as well as where those emission reductions are going to come from. And I'll just point out the clean, healthy water, that 2% reduction, both the wastewater and Water Authority have pretty much already committed to that energy reduction. So that one is already in the works. And I'll also point out with buildings and energy, trying to do energy efficiency, Penn State has done a lot of actions to reduce their emissions 35%. So I want to just make sure we are understanding that it is possible, there's going to be a lot of work, but this plan is going to help us reach it. Milestone three was to look at our climate vulnerabilities, sort of where our risks are, and talk about how we're going to adapt. And so we did that at a high level for the region, working with the Center County Hazard of Mitigation Plan. And then also Ferguson Township conducted a Community Resilience Building Workshop, so that's where we got some of our information. But we do, with this visual, talk about sort of the two major impacts that we're going to see from climate change, which is a gradual increase in temperature over time. And then what we're really experiencing now and starting to feel are these large rain events that we're experiencing. And so those come with hazards, which are there, shown there in the yellow. And again, it comes down to the local impacts that our residents are feeling, our businesses are experiencing, where it can either be power outages, it can be road damage, and so there's costs, but it can also be disruptions to business and homeowners in their daily lives. And there's public health issues, Lyme disease is growing in Center County. So it's all of these impacts that we have to start to look at and try to help our community be prepared for in the future. To help create the plan and make it relevant, we really tried to engage the public. So over the past year, we've been working with stakeholders, municipalities, businesses and residents. We know we didn't reach everybody, but we did over the past year reach, we talked to 70 subject matter experts to come up with best practices to include in the plan. This spring, we did a survey where we got over 1,800 responses, and then we also held a public forum. And again, that was during the pandemic, so it wasn't easy to do, there was no tabling to try to get out and meet people where they are. We have to continue to do that. But we have done a pretty good job, and we're trying to talk about where we align, where our goals and priorities can, can match up. So I'm not going to go through the whole survey, but the survey is available for viewing, the whole report and executive summary at that link up there in the, the top. But I pulled out sort of two of what the survey says that I find very interesting. So there's sort of these top 10 actions that received support from the community, with the highest one being to help identify high-priority conservation lands to help with flooding and, and major rain events. There's a whole bunch, there's all 10 of those there. The other thing that I think is really interesting is what we heard from the respondents is 75% of the community members are neutral or agree that climate change is happening, but 83 to 84%, even more, people think that it's good to address climate change, it's good for the local economy. And then they also, 83% say policymakers should consider scientific projections in what the climate's going to be looking like. So there is a strong belief in the community that actions make sense. So there is a strong belief in the community that actions make sense. So we also did a report on the public forum that happened, and again, that link is up there on the website. But basically, for the public forum, Penn State Law students and professor helped facilitate the conversation, and we had breakout rooms where we asked the members to talk about what the impacts they were experiencing, what opportunities they thought might be possible for climate, or, yeah, with climate change, and what actions they thought were relevant. And then they came back and provided key messages. And so those key messages are listed there, and really, they're wanting people, local government and the community, to help start shifting from reacting to disasters, to be more proactive. Both the survey and the forum really indicated that there is a strong community will for taking action. So I'll just summarize by, again, repeating that we did not reach everybody, but it's really important to have these community conversations to promote an understanding of why we created this Climate Action Plan and sort of the motivation behind it, and really to build a broader ownership. As decisions are being made, it's important for the community to understand why and what we're doing, and so that ownership is key moving forward. The information that we got from the community and will continue to help guide us, but it has helped form what actions ended up in the action plan, as well as it will help over time with the implementation. And then lastly, talking to the community and making sure they're part of it will help prepare the community for implementation, as well as for this changing climate. We really need to reach all of our community. So when we looked at actions, we have public engagement, but we also recognize that there's many benefits of doing all of the actions, really. Many of the actions, if not all of them, have co-benefits. And we grouped them into these four sections of, that are shown up here. This creating jobs and economic prosperity is one example, advancing social equity, fostering resource security, and improving public health and local environmental quality. And so when you look at the co-benefits, when you look at the different actions, each one of them talk about where they might fit in there. And I'll give an example. On the Energy in Buildings section, one of the objectives is to improve energy efficiency in existing buildings. So if you think about that, if your building is more energy efficient, you'll have lower utility costs, so it can help save the property owner money. If we, as a community, are really putting an emphasis on energy efficiency, that can create job growth, right? That energy efficiency business, there'll be more people that can do that work. And if we're reducing the demand of our energy, that means we're not needing another power plant. We need less fuel resources, and that gives us cleaner air, less air pollution. So that's an example of what we're talking about when I say co-benefits. I also always like to include the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals to make sure that we recognize that climate action doesn't stand by itself. To build a sustainable community, you really have to look across the silos and recognize that there's multiple benefits to taking many of these actions. So before we get to like the meat of the, the taking action in the, the plan, we sort of identified how we laid out the plan, and we really wanted it to focus on, we can do this. There's, there's things already happening. So we gave a story about local leadership, either through municipal actions, community members' actions, and these are some of the examples here of things that local government and our community, the school district, the different authorities are doing to make our community more resilient. So we talk about local leadership partnerships. I think our region is really good at this, and we need to continue to do those. Social equity is definitely something that we recognize needs to be fully integrated into this plan as we're looking at our actions. And again, we know that these impacts are going to be right with our community, so we want to help make sure our community members are prepared. So when we talk about the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, we set it up into six sectors, and these are three of them. And each of the sectors, we identified a goal, and we tried to put a numeric goal to that that would show how we can get to that greenhouse gas reduction. And under each goal, then there's objectives, either three or four that are shown up here. And then under each of those objectives, there's actions, and that information is in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. So these, these are three of them. The other three are shown here, solid waste, land management, and clean, healthy water. So they sometimes have definitely connections between them, but those are the, the objectives and the goals that are shown up there. And we're really hoping to do this through policy, influence, education, and partnerships. As Denny pointed out, and if you saw it, it's, it's definitely a comprehensive document. There's a lot in it, but we're trying to make it hopefully simple to read and enjoyable, so hopefully you can all take a chance to look at it. But our first phase is really going to be looking at ourselves, COG and municipal operations, getting our house in order. And this is some of the examples, but we want to kind of lead and spur community action by looking at what different municipalities are doing. For example, Patton Township is currently looking in ordinance for putting in bike infrastructure for new buildings. So that's something that we can share and talk about regionally and build upon. We also can help disseminate information that's already out there and build upon partnerships. For example, we have right now a Center County Solar and EV Charger Co-op that's launched in September, and we are just partnering with Solar United Neighbors to try to spread the word about solar. The co-op walks you through it. So they're doing the heavy lifting, but that's an, an example of helping with partnerships that we don't have to do the work, but we can work with them. And then finally, while we're focusing on one or two, the elected officials and the community, we really need to work together to prioritize actions, sort of come up with a specific plan for what's coming next. How are we going to keep doing this? So this image here is to try to show how the Climate Action Plan works with the municipalities. And again, we really want it to integrate with existing municipal operations. We are not trying to create new programs or anything. It's a plan that your Parks and Rec Committee, your Shade Tree Commission, Planning Commission can try to use to coordinate and guide local efforts. And then COG, we want to help have that regional conversation so that we can keep talking to each other. So I'm back to the seventh step, and we're about to start on the implementation. And I really want to recognize that we need to monitor and evaluate that progress. The Climate Action and Sustainability Committee will be working on what is this implementation's going to look like, and how are we going to keep track of it and report back. And then lastly, I'll just show, this is what's on our website. There's the link to our website, again, over there on the left, crcog.net/cap. I'll be going to the municipalities this month, and then there's a comment submission section for the public to report on, but I'm here tonight to answer any of your questions that you have on the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phenomenal project. Just the layout of the, of the copy itself is just, just great with all the photography in it. Good, good stuff. Questions of Pam?
Mary, sorry, can we all go to the microphone just so CNET?
I just said excellent presentation.
Sorry. CNET can't get you from the audience like that. I apologize. Thank you.
I want to thank you. It was an excellent presentation. Excellent.
Take some time and read it. And could, could they get a hard copy by, it's going somewhere, just downloading it and printing it?
Correct. On there is information, my contacts there. If people want a hard copy of it, I'm happy to figure out how we get one to you, or you can pick one up. We do plan, there is an executive summary at the beginning, and we are planning to come up with maybe even a two-pager, real short and sweet, very visual thing. So we're going to continue to try to get the word out.
It's about 100 pages long, so it's pretty, pretty long when the print is.
But lots of pictures.
Yeah. Wonderful photography. Colleagues, the agenda item is to get feedback to you by October 29th.
Correct.
Do we have any feedback immediately, or we want to contemplate that?
I've sat through committee, how many times have we seen this now? I mean, I've, I've done a bunch of my comments at the committee level. I'd have to sit down and contemplate if I have any other things I want to discuss.
The one in particular that is a solar power purchase agreement. You want to say a few minute words about that? Because it's, it's unique, it's unique in Pennsylvania.
Yeah, I think this is a great example of partnerships. So we're currently engaged with 15 entities in the Center County. So this is even beyond COG, which has been good at partnerships, but we've partnered with the school district, with the Borough Water Authority, the Center County Housing Authority, the Refugees and Recycling Authority, Potter, Center Hall, Wastewater Authority, CADA, Public Transit.
School District.
School District, and then all the municipalities and Center County. So the idea that 15 government entities can work together, and we are doing it and figuring out, we're kind of trying to explore doing renewable energy through a solar power purchase agreement. So we've figured out a way to share costs, and we've just, the school district is leading the, the contract with a consultant, an energy services consultant, that will help walk us through the process so that we can make a good decision if it's going to make sense, so that we can get a portion of our electricity use through renewable energy.
Harris Township cost on that contract is about $270.
Right, and that really shows the benefit of working together.
The cost is based upon kilowatt used over time, so it's a good project.
It is a good project. Very exciting.
And the contract was just let, last week.
Correct.
With school district. Others?
Bud? I'm on this committee, although I've not committed anything, not, not provided any information yet, but what, what you'll, you'll find when you read through this, this is a excellent source. It's not a knee-jerk reaction. It's not we're all going to cook, we're all going to die by roasting to death or anything like this. It is a slow process to see what we need to do. We know for a fact we're not going to change the world with this. But I, I like this because it is an adaptive plan. We don't have to use, if it doesn't, if there's something wrong with this plan, we don't have to use it. It's our, it's a tool to use. And we would like a comment, like a lot of comments on this, to see what we can come up with. I think what you'll find is that, right now, we probably live in the best part of the world as far as, as far as climate change right now goes. We're only going to get wetter and, and longer growing seasons compared to someplace else. But this, this is, Pam has very, done a great job on this. It is something that's going to, we don't do this, we're going to die. This is great. Read through this and make some suggestions so we can get a good, what was something we can work with?
Yeah. And to Bud's point, it is, we are in a region that people are more likely to move to.
Oh, yes.
So we are going to continue to grow, and we want to make sure we're doing it in a smart, sustainable way.
And the word mandate is not in here.
No. No, that is, from the survey, we learned that we need to educate, incentivize, and involve the community. People don't like requirements or mandates.
Yeah, nice, nice part about reading this is saying, it makes sense. Oh, you're trying to force something on me. We're going, we're going to, we're going to see how we go, and soon as we will know what to do. We will know what to do.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on. State College Area Connector Project. Amy, you want to kick this one off, please?
Sure. So PNDOT held public meetings on the State College Area Connector Project on September 22nd and 23rd. The meetings were very well-attended by township residents concerned about the possible road alignments. Since that meeting, staff has heard from several residents who have provided suggestions on how to move forward. One of the residents indicated that PNDOT said they may decide to relook at the possible alignments based on updated mapping and the feedback provided, and make adjustments prior to sending the project for its environmental, its NEPA review. Staff reached out to PNDOT to ask if they would be amenable to scheduling a charrette with Potter and Harris Township officials. The purpose of the charrette would be to use updated mapping to discuss the goals of the project and to look at the possible alignments. Since this project has the potential to gravely impact both communities, it may be more effective if we work together to identify potential alignments that minimize the impacts to both communities. PNDOT was agreeable to having such a meeting, and I did reach out to Potter Township to see if their board would be interested in attending, and I'm going to follow up with them again early this week. So the purpose of this agenda item tonight was just to determine if we had any additional comments on the project, if there was anything else you wanted to discuss. I did include a copy of the statement that we released and we sent to PNDOT with our comments that you guys developed at your last meeting. And we also sent those comments off to all of the elected officials in the Center Region, plus the county commissioners as well, so that everybody was aware of our feelings on the project. If anybody in the audience hasn't seen them, our strongest statement is that we can only support the Route 144-3 alignment. We're vehemently opposed to any alignments along the Route 322 corridor. If anybody went to the public meeting, you may have noticed that Routes 322-4 and 322-5 take out our brand-new maintenance facility, which we opened in April of this year and borrowed money for the next 20 years. So we're trying to do what we can. I will say this, and I've heard this from, we have a gentleman out on Somerset Drive who's fantastic, who's been going just grassroots, door-to-door, doing a survey, talking with PNDOT, talking with whoever he can. And I mentioned to him that my understanding of the SITS project, I was not here then, was that it really divided our community. And I think the last thing we want to have happen right now is have our community divided. I think that this, this project, we can't let it do that. So whatever we can do to come together as a community, and that's why we put out the comments that we did, another one of the supervisors' concerns is that the mapping that they used was completely old and out of date. It did not show our maintenance facility, it did not show any of the new growth we had in the eastern section of the township. Kaywood North was missing, a lot of sections of Rocky Ridge were missing. We're the, been the fastest-growing municipality in Center County from 2014 to the present, and most of our growth has been on the eastern side of the township. And that's where they want to think, they want to put this road. So the supervisors endorsed the concept of asking PNDOT about this charrette, which is a design process. The thought behind it being, and the resident who brought it up to me said, oh, PNDOT said they may have to go back and just redo everything because the mapping was so bad. The idea would be, we would all sit down, the supervisors and the supervisors from Potter Township and PNDOT, with a map that's actually up to date, and talk about what the goals are for this project. The other thing, and it comes, it's kind of good this follows the Climate Action Plan, Governor Wolf has emissions reduction standards for the state of Pennsylvania. This project is very contrary to those emissions reduction standards, and that's also included within our statement. Our statement is on our website. I can email to anybody that didn't see it. We did send it out on the e-update and put it on Facebook. So that's kind of.
This is on the web page.
Yeah, that's, that's our statement. Yep.
This pink sheet is on our, is the update of what we talked about last time. So colleagues first, or anyone, start in the audience. Diane, if you would, please.
I feel, Diane Gregg, downtown Linden Hall, 148 Rock Hill Road. Well, it's a very important local distinction. I feel better after hearing Amy's remarks, because I was on the SITS Commission 20 years ago. I want to give you a couple of things, pieces of history that might be relevant as you discuss this going forward. Those maps make some very unhelpful assumptions. One, one being that all this traffic on non-football weekends is going to State College. We were told it was the NAFTA X. So the leg from Texas to eastern Canada is 99, the leg from the Port of Baltimore to Chicago is 322, which makes a big difference in where you think's a good place for this to go. I understand Bollesburg's issues with the existing footprint routes, but Linden Hall has some serious issues with the other two. And when I saw it was the same map, it's like, no, because we were going to kill those two routes. If we had gone to the decision point, the project was scrapped like two days before we went to the weekend to choose the route, which only made sense then because if we decided on a route that they couldn't afford to build, it would have condemned people's property, and they couldn't have done anything with it all that time. The initial maps were drawn, were called the spaghetti maps. There were 26 routes, I think is the right number. The way it was set up was three triangle points were on the map and nothing else. People were told to pretend there was nothing else there and just draw it where it felt good. One of the more Machiavellian members of the committee told me after it was over that he deliberately drew two, the routes through Linden Hall to draw us in on his side of the fight. So that was part of where the animosity came from, that people were playing politics with how they drew the maps to get, to get the thing going in a different direction. And Linden Hall was not on the original maps at all. If you look at the state roadmap, we are. That's the official record of place names in Pennsylvania, but not to PNDOT. It took two years to. It took two years to correct this, and three of us went to the Department, the Transportation Commission, and the Secretary of Transportation to get this changed. So, PennDOT finally put us in, but if you look at the current maps, not too accurately, and that is not the lower, and look at the naming of the Brush Valley Road and see if it squares with your experience. So, furthermore, the second route, the one that's going through Aspen, on the Aspen Heights side, is drawn right on the border of the historic district. So, it's like a technicality, we're not taking your historic district, we're just going to ruin it with noise and light pollution, but I was told it would be okay because they would make the concrete look like it was old rock. There are two historic districts in Linden Hall, the smaller one and then the Rural Landscape Historic District. I hope you can argue on our behalf that we are an asset to agribusiness tourism. When the people from the Smithsonian came in to look at the Rural Landscape Historic District to see if they would approve it, they were stunned. They said they had never seen such an expanse of land that had not been touched from the original land grants. All those rock walls that we have, so many of the original tenant houses are still standing. It's not just that we're a historic district, we're an extremely unique historic district. Now, had we gone on to the decision on the original routes, Linden Hall would have been eliminated because we have so many environmental issues there, there are a number of endangered species, there are a lot of highly-preserved farms, as well as our historic districts. Please don't make us go through this again. Thank you for listening.
Other? Anne? She's waving. Don't wave too many times, you have to. Zach, you're up.
All right, I'll be very brief. I read through the final report today, that 63-page report. I've done a lot of analysis in my life, including things in the Pentagon and Washington. We always use three words, complete, accurate, and timely data. It's not in the report. How the hell can you make decisions if you don't have complete, accurate, timely data?
Others?
Geez, he was very cool. Holy cow. I saw you laughing.
Eric? Go, you're up. The mic is free.
Residents of Linden Hall met last night and tried to go just the first step in what can we do? And we also know that different neighborhoods are meeting and getting representatives. So, we, we came up with people volunteering to look into different areas, like environment, truck and road safety, and, and the, the environment. And we don't know what to do. I mean, we're, we're stuck. I mean, people are, have left, there were, let me just leave the areas. Anne made this little chart, Anne Stevens, and it was interest areas, so that when people left, somebody was going to talk with Clearwater, somebody was going to talk with an attorney, somebody was going to talk with transportation, trucking companies. Our wonderful Stan Smith in College Township was going to talk with somebody about sinkholes. We're looking to talk to our representatives and senators, senator and representative, and we're going to talk with Happy Valley Visiting Bureau. So, all these different neighborhoods are working hard to be proactive so that Harris Township and Potter Township and Center Hall, that we save this beautiful countryside. So, we don't know what to do next, but that's the first step. We had the meeting last night, as did other neighborhoods.
My observation is that this is going to be a community effort. It's not going to fall on the shoulders of Harris or Potter Township significantly. It's going to take the input of a lot of people. So, we have to, have to keep working on that premise that it's going to take a lot of people, it takes the village in this case, and we have a lot of people that can help us, so we've just got to keep working on it. Thank you.
And I would also just add, the gentleman on Somerset Drive has been sending me his survey with all the comments from folks, and I know Anne sent me a letter, which I forwarded off to the supervisors today. If you guys put anything together, feel free to send that to me. I send it to the board, and then I have created a folder for it, and we're saving all of that. So, whatever we can do, whatever we can collect, I know I've talked with the folks in Aspen Heights, and they were going to reach out to the folks in Kwood North to try to band together. So, I think if we can all try to get together and speak with one voice, that would mean a lot to PennDOT, rather than listening to different people saying, "Not in my backyard, not in my backyard, not in my backyard." And I think we have very valid reasons to oppose the 322 alignments in, through Harris Township, so...
Can we ask Mr. Zilla to make a couple of comments?
Yeah.
I bet him. First name is Tom.
Danny, can we ask Mr. Zilla to make a few comments here, if we'd like to, or not like to?
Tom?
I've heard nothing of.
Okay, okay.
I've yet to meet the gentleman from Somerset, but I've read his long, long chain of comments and have read his spreadsheet, which is a massive spreadsheet with comments from 230 people. Too big to print, so. Oh, Frank? Go ahead, go ahead, go back, we'll pick up Frank.
All right, so, we know that all these communities are organizing. So, how do we come together? Like, I was thinking that you're going to have PennDOT com and could, you know, how do we go the next step?
So, my thought is, and again, I have to follow up again with Potter Township to see if we can get the charrette put together, and the charrette would be the Harris Township Board of Supervisors and the Potter Township Board of Supervisors with PennDOT. But I think going into that meeting, if the supervisors had the various concerns noted and could bring them in and say, "Look, this is, these are the issues with these alignments that we're seeing that you're proposing." I think there's a solution out there, but I don't think that PennDOT's necessarily being the most creative in looking for that solution, and I think that's the problem. And I think that's where, I mean, I hear from residents almost every day about this, which is great, because a lot of them have really good ideas, and I keep trying to forward on, you know, we keep trying to forward on those ideas to PennDOT, and I think we need to keep pushing them outside of their box.
Had we, I got one. They had another totally new route drawn on it.
Yes. That gentleman gave that to PennDOT. He did.
Did he? Okay, and it's in my file at home, so I keep, I keep printing all this stuff, and it's getting thicker and thicker, so. Frank? Oh, you're coming.
Just a couple of comments. You know, these, some of these gentlemen have been doing this for a lot, lot of years and have been down the road. I've only been doing it for six years now, but what I've learned is, you can talk to your blue in the face, but you better have your gun loaded when you talk to PennDOT, because they're going to do what they want to do 99% of the time. That being said, if you look at this from Potter's Mills to either coming this way or that way, and just pick a place, nobody's not going to be upset, and that's what we have to do as a community. What we're trying to do is get with the municipalities and approach it from our end, but in answer to your question, if you guys could get the communities together so you're saying the same thing, because if you're saying, like Amy said, "Not in my backyard," and "Not over here, but over there," PennDOT's going to finally say, "Well, we got one from everybody." Well, you know what, we might as well upset these guys. So, I think the more you can get together with the different communities and sit down and say, "You know, we've looked at this, this is the best place," or "We can't do this, but we can do this." So, I think the more you guys can do that as residents, I think that's the best way, because like I said, the one thing that could happen, and it's happened before, is we could all send our little individual things in, and PennDOT can go, "You know what, I don't think they want the road. Pull the money and leave again." And then we're going on doing it for another 10 years or 20 years or whatever. So, like I said, I think the more you can get together with different communities, I think the stronger you'll be.
Mike, you look like you have thought coming.
Is no option an option? Is no option an option?
I guess it is. No build is an option.
It was on, it was on the material, yeah, yeah. Bush?
Yeah, we definitely need to do something. The people you have to convince aren't sitting at this table. People you have to convince work in Harrisburg. So, your local representatives, the Secretary of Transportation, the PennDOT people, those are the ones that have to hear your message. Certainly, united message is better than a bunch of individuals, but that's where the message has to go. If you don't talk to the people who work in Harrisburg, nothing's going to change.
And take that to the official office also, because that's where this is coming from.
Also, if anybody can get Penn State to, I honestly believe if Penn State University came out and said, "This is the alignment, we support Harris Township 144-3," that would go a long way, I think, as well, because I think there are a lot of legislators who come up here for seven football weekends a year and graduated from Penn State and want to get this done, because then they look great, they drive on the four-lane road to get to State College, but there's an impact to our community, and if Penn State would stand behind us, I think that would also help.
I ask a gentleman, the Wyndham, with respect to who's representing Penn State in this project. No reply. No reply.
No reply.
No, no reply. Didn't answer that one, so. I find it somewhat difficult to believe that there's not a Penn State influence here somewhere.
Look over I-99, came from Milesburg, met from Milesburg, suddenly ended up at Beavure Stadium, now we have a missing link from Potter's Mills to the University of New York.
Amy, what do you suggest we go in terms of next steps? The Potter Township meeting?
Yep, we're trying to get that scheduled, so as soon as we get that scheduled, we'll certainly let everybody know. And I would again encourage people that have ideas to reach out, because I hear, I've heard a lot of great ones, and our residents are very in tune with this, so I think that's great. So, reach out to us, because then we can share that. And also, even though that public comment period is over, I have Dean Ball's phone number sitting in my office, he's the project manager, I have his email address. Continue to hound them with your thoughts. Continue to, not hound, but continue to share your thoughts and comments with them, because I think they need to keep hearing from us.
The gentleman whose first name is Tom, probably has the greatest, the biggest data bank now?
Yeah, he's amazing. He put together, his name is Tom Olzum-Balski, I believe, he put together a survey, and he emailed it to me, and I put it in the e-update, and he got all these responses from the survey. And every single day, he emails Dean Ball new information from his survey, and he's been going out, I think he met with the Linden Hall folks. He's been going out knocking on every single door he can knock on.
He was at a meeting.
Yeah, he told me he was there. He's amazing.
You've met him?
Yes.
I've not, so.
He's also a military gentleman, so I think he showed up in his...
Is there such a thing?
Military dress.
US Air Force on aerospace program on campus. The meeting that, if we put together with PennDOT, will have to be a public meeting?
I don't know, probably not. It's a charrette. It's a workshop.
Public?
Probably not.
Okay. We have to deal with that one.
Just one more comment. Grassroots organizing works in so many ways. It has worked in Harris Township in the past since I've been on the board. We don't have a ugly substation at the intersection of Shingle Town Road and Bowle Avenue in Atherton because of grassroots organizing. We have sensible development of Liberty Hill largely because of grassroots organizing. There's probably more examples, however. Get out there and get the information.
I forgot about the substation issue of years and years ago.
Yeah, and there was, and, oh, and also Yoder Preserve, grassroots organizing, got it done.
And raised, raised $300,000 to pay for it.
Right, so, don't underestimate the power of getting a whole bunch of people together to push one idea. Again, the idea is to push the one idea where we want it. We don't want to push individual ideas where we don't want it. But you can back up reasons why we don't want it here or there or wherever, but you still have to push for the most sensible alternative.
Good, thank you. You okay? Got an idea of where we're, yes, sir?
When will we know what you think is the most sensible alternative? When will we know what Harris Township...
So, did you see our statement that we...
Yeah, I did see that. But these other townships are going to hate that, or PennDOT may hate that, so of the eight or nine alternatives that aren't going somewhere else...
They have a deadline, and I forget when it was.
October 7th.
I don't know, for announcing the...
Oh, the 2022 is when they want to narrow it down to three.
Middle of 2022, I think.
Once we had the town, there will be another public meeting in December, January, I think it is. January, am I right on that?
Later, probably February.
February. But there will be another one, which will do what, it's going to narrow them down to...
But I would like to know what the Harris Township supervisors think, and I've heard Amy say, "My God, our maintenance facility," I've read that, "our maintenance facility is going to get suspended over 20 years, we can't possibly go that route." I would argue that there's a lot more valuable things in Harris Township than a maintenance facility.
Yeah, one of the things, if you look on this, what we, what we are pushing, and as far as the supervisor and where we're standing is, that from Potter's Mills over the mountain to I-99 is what, seven miles, right?
Around there.
Around seven miles. And to come this way and go all the way back down around to get to 80, it's 22 miles.
I measure about 22 miles.
So, so we're looking at...
It's a big mountain to go down.
But if you look at that one we were looking at, it comes across Potter's Mills, it takes a wide left, heads all the way past the Grange Fair, over there, and then comes angles up the mountain, so that they, and I think they want a 4% slope, I think is what was on the thing.
They'll make it.
If you want, seven mountains is 8%. So, it's a 4% slope is what they're looking to go over that mountain. So, it's not undoable to do what they're talking about, and that's kind of where we're coming from, is that, hey, let's do that, and we pushed from pretty much day one that we want 322, because if you think they put that in and it's over, they're going to keep coming back to this. So, I've been pushing, and I know these guys have supported me, and we've all pushed, I pushed at the NPO, is let's make 322 Business 322, not make US 322 go on the new road and come around. Make this Business 322, put some red lights in, put traffic circles, you know, maybe widen it with wide berms or something, but put safety features and make this a business route up through here, so we don't have all the traffic. And that's kind of where, that's what our suggestion is.
So, if we did that, we wouldn't be doing one of these other eight routes?
No, no, we would, well, they, they could do another eight routes going that way, but coming this way, we want to do a Business 322.
Okay, so Business 322 is your preferred alternative, if they can't go somewhere else on the existing route?
Yeah, we would sooner see it be a Business 322 widened and made it safety features than have a four-lane come up through.
Okay, I don't know how strongly that's been communicated.
It's one of the alternatives.
It's one of the alternatives.
It is one of the alternatives.
Yeah, I can actually read what we said, these last two paragraphs I think are important. "We cannot support any alignments along Route 322 as we feel you used a flawed process to determine these locations. PennDOT used out-of-date mapping and old ASA ag security area information to draft alignments and proposed interchange locations that would gravely impact businesses, homes, and the township's own brand-new maintenance facility. We vehemently oppose all alignments along Route 322. These alignments would forever alter the character of our community. Additionally, these alignments would remove all of our industrial-zoned property. There is no additional location in the township where land could be rezoned industrial to accommodate any relocation of impacted properties. This may force these businesses and the church to relocate outside of the township. This would have a grave impact on our tax base and the future financial viability of the township. Once the future road is completed along Route 144, Route 322 could be renamed as Business 322 to provide local accesses to business and residences along the road. That section of road could also be widened and upgraded to provide safety and provide more tools to deal with increased volume due to special events being held in the Center Region."
But see, that, you're saying that about 322, once you go over the mountain?
Yes.
Okay, I'm saying if that doesn't happen, what is your preferred route?
That's another, there is no other preferred route.
Well, no, our preferred route, whether it goes up over the mountain or not, we want 322 to be a Business 322. We don't want a four-lane coming up through here. So, that would, that would be our alternative, and that, when PennDOT does this, it's not all build new roads. Some of these alternatives are exactly what we're talking about. Make, widen the road, put safety features in, you know, doing things like that. So, a new build is only one of the six alternative programs that they look at. No build is one. Don't do anything. That's, that's an alternative.
Okay, I'm just hoping that Harris Township supervisors can go strongly down the route of 322 and stay off of any of these other...
That's our plan.
We are, we are doing that. That's what we're trying to do, but again, we need your help, too. I mean, you know...
Trust us, we're all going to do our part.
Yeah, yes.
You don't think...
Diane?
You don't think this...
Hit the mic, watch. Hit the mic, watch.
You didn't make the pass around.
Yeah, we did.
You don't think pushing 322 would drive them toward Linden Hall?
They're not pushing it.
We're not pushing it.
I know. I understand. But you're pushing it far enough, then wouldn't whip around and come to us?
If it's 326, there would be no other alternative routes.
Just wanted to know.
There'd be no other alternative routes.
Let's, let's proceed with the Potter Township attempt, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Let me add the--
Bruce?
Just let me add that when we, when we met with Penn Dot, our, one of our comments was that whatever route is or is not taken, 322 still needs safety improvements. No matter what other decision is made, 322 needs and deserves safety improvements. We're hurting too many. We're killing too many people along that road as it is, and that's not going to change until those changes go into place.
About seven years ago, they had a large 14-inch sheet that had safety improvements A to G or H or I.
How about 12 years ago?
I still have a count. And they've only completed three or four of those. One was the white dots on the road. The second one was a straightening the curve at the motorcycle shop.
Oh, no, you're talking about the improvements on, yes, yes. Closing roads down, yes.
Most of those have never been, never been implemented, so.
And then they have done some good work on 322. They've done some, some good work along, turning lanes and closing lanes. They've done, they, I think they have committed money to the basic 322. They do a good job. Instances are dropping. You cannot legislate stupidity or bad driving, but I think they've done a good job. Then I'd like to add my two cents, not that it makes any difference. Well, really, it doesn't. Well, my, my concern is, we, the Penn Dot has put us through this for 15 years now, and everybody's worried about this. And they're not doing us a very good, they're not doing us a very good justice. They really aren't. All these routes that they come up with, once they chose a route that gets to go to Department of Environmental Protection, they can say, "You can't do any of that." And there we are, with another 15 or 20 million dollars. So they're really not, Penn Dot is really not doing us. I don't know if they're trying, purposely trying to be that quiet about it, or not being as open as they should about it. I don't know. Engineers have their jobs to do, and they're, they're assigned to this section, but they're not doing us a favor. And, and I think it would be nice if they, if, and another thing, it's all political. You get another, you get another political, other people in there, the monies could go someplace else. Their attitude could change. So a change, a change of administration in Harrisburg could eliminate all this if they wanted to. So, and we know, we know that there's no money. We met with Governor Wolf Wint, sorry, two years ago?
Three years ago.
Three years, and there was no money. And no money in the near future to build this. So that means they're going to do all this study. They're going to study it, and they're going to set on it for eight or nine years, whatever they get the money. And then when they get the money, it's under 12-year plan. And it's 12 years after that. So they're being, we're getting everybody excited. Like, we have meetings like this, which I don't mind at all. It's kind of interesting, but it may not mean anything. And so let's not get excited about it. Let's, that's just what we prefer, route, and stick with it, and load our guns and get ready to go with it. And look at the administration. The administration's the one that decided this. Penn Dot doesn't, they don't have a vote at the table. Somebody, some legislator has to vote that. So, you know, look at the, a very good, Schuster was great at getting roads, or not getting roads. So there's a lot of things to do here. So let's, let's get our, we, we checked, we got a preferable route, we know why you don't want to go anyplace else, and jump on it and go with it.
Get the meeting going, and we'll keep you informed. You know what we know right now. There's a lot of transparency on this whole project, so we have to make sure that everyone's comfortable about it, so. Jack, one final comment.
Has anybody here talked to Senator Cornet, Veltland, who's the chair of the Senate Transportation Committee?
I don't, it's not in his hands right now. It, it, this, it can, you're right about that. This, this dog and pony show we're going through right now is, is just leading up before it gets to anywhere near here.
But remember, in the dog and pony show, a pony gets saddled, and they have--
Well, yeah, once, once they do it, you're, you're probably right.
And the cart gets, the cart gets heavy to pull.
One of the things keep in mind, since the one they did in 2003, '04, whatever, Penn Dot's changed the way to do it. What we did back then, by the time it came to you, they'd pretty much already done most of the work. Now, no engineering's been done, no final costs have been done. This is the preliminary. So this is going to get done, like Bud said. We could send 10 alternatives to NEPA. We might get one back, if we're lucky. They, they might say, "Hey, there's a frog there. That one's gone," you know? "There's, there's a wetland. That one's gone."
Well, here's what bothers about this. We don't know. These routes they gave us, they may not be feasible. Maybe, there may not be, think, why they put them, they don't know. They didn't look, they didn't look to see that we did just put a brand-new building and a brand-new church and a brand-new business right there. They had no idea. That, that isn't going to fly. You know that. And they're going through explanation. You know that's not going to happen. Some of these things, it just don't make sense. Now, they have to put them out there and study them, but I wish, I just wish there'd be some more transparency to say, "Look, let's, this isn't going to happen for 15 or 20 years. Let's, that's, I don't know. It's just getting everybody in the upper, maybe over nothing."
One final comment, and I, I keep saying this, and everybody looks, they're going through all this. I know somebody at Penn Dot, when they say, "Okay, we're ready to go," he's going to open up his closet door, and on the back, he's going to go, "Here it is." He's going to shake it off, and away we go. So that will always, that's the worry I have. No matter what we do, that's what's going to happen.
I don't know if that's completely true or not. I would say they have their--
That's, I don't know if it is either, but that's my thought.
Mr. Zilla would know better than I do.
If we're dealing with the church, we're dealing with the higher power. Let's word it that way.
Get the meeting going, and we'll keep you informed. Okay? Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work on this. Good points, Amy.
Thank you. Each one of you. Thank you.
Okay, Mary Elizabeth Street culvert project. Who's going to--
I'll start.
--open this bag of worms?
I'll start the bag of worms. Staff met recently with Josh Stetz from Larson Design Group to discuss progress on the design work for the Mary Elizabeth Street culvert project.
That's him?
Yes. That's him. And to discuss options for proceeding with the repair. We've--
Where you live?
Williamsport.
Oh, you got nothing to worry about.
Information on the options identified were included in the packet. Mr. Stetz indicated that in the process of working on the design, a challenge was identified, because, why not, with the partial slip lining option, the option that would only slip line 22.5 feet of the culvert to repair the section with the crack. He indicated that if this option were chosen, future lining upstream would be more difficult, meaning the entire structure may eventually have to be replaced, which would be a bit of an issue. This could mean the township's spent $144,000 on a Band-Aid that would have to be scrapped in a few years. In discussing the options, Mr. Stetz indicated the entire structure could be slip lined now, which would give the culvert an additional 50 years of life. This would be cheaper than a total replacement, would also be less disruptive to residents in the area as the road would not have to be closed, and there wouldn't be a gaping hole where the structure was while the project's being completed. We did get a detailed cost estimate, which is included in your packet. The estimate for the total slip lining is $625,800 for construction and additional $19,750 in design fees to account for the additional permitting required by DEP to do the work. In addition to the concerns about how the partial slip lining will impact future repairs, there are some supply chain issues with getting the materials needed to complete the repair this year. However, we do not feel that delaying the project into the next construction season will cause issues. The bridge will be inspected again in December to assess if there have been any changes in the crack or additional issues with the structure. Mr. Zilla's hanging around in the back. Thank you, Mr. Zilla, for staying.
That's what I was here for.
Well, I came for the road diet, too. But we reached out to the Center County MPO to find out if it would be possible to get additional funds needed to complete the entire slip lining and effectively replace the bridge in 2022. As you may remember, we currently have $237,000 for the project, with 105,000 of that from the county and 100,000 of that from our ARPA allocation. We would need in the neighborhood of an additional $408,550 in funding to complete the full slip lining. Mr. Zilla can explain what the MPO discussed about, or with District Two about that. Mr. Stetz can talk about the slip lining. Mr. Fransen's just here, because I made him come to the meeting.
What does all this mean with respect to Penn Dot closing Mary Elizabeth at the end of 2021? Is that, is that still part of this whole schema?
There's, so basically, I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding when it comes to the priority deficiency and, and the six-month period that you have to address that deficiency. So basically--
From when we started to, to the end of the year?
Right. So basically, when we identified the issue through the bridge inspection, we gave that a priority one deficiency. So through that priority one deficiency, you are given basically six months to, to develop a plan of action. And in that, within that six months, we, we decreased the inspection frequency. Actually, we did inspect the structure back on September 29th, and no changes whatsoever. Everything still looked the same. And I just want to point out one other little thing. The overall condition of the structure hasn't changed drastically over the last several years. What, what has changed is the way that we have to report and code the different deficiencies that we see when we're out there. So, and I believe part of that is because, you know, a lot of times, these structures are there for 100 years, maybe, and people don't really pay much attention to them until it's too late. So I think that push has been kind of to get the attention out there sooner, so that people can start to plan to, for, you know, repairs or replacement. So basically, what we looked at was doing a full-length reline, as, as Amy mentioned. And that full-length reline, basically, what, exactly what it sounds like, we slip a smaller structure through the structure that's there, fill the gap between with grout, have bulkheads constructed at either end.
Is that option 3B?
That is actually option 1B.
1B, okay, okay.
Yeah. So we looked at several different options. We did run into some, some permitting-type issues when it comes to doing the, the full-length reline. Basically, we would increase our headwater elevations or the upstream water elevations about a half foot. So in order to get the approval for the permit, and I'll just take a step back, the structure is located in a detailed FEMA study zone. So because it's located in that study zone, and we're increasing headwater elevations, we have to do additional backwater analysis.
What zone do you do?
It's, it's a, it's in a detailed FEMA flood study zone, so it's in a Zone AE.
What does that mean?
So basically, back in, I believe it was 1986, I want to say it was, FEMA did a, a study through the corridor of Spring Creek there and determined what the 100-year flood elevations--
I just think one or two years ago. They did not change that, or they did one like three years ago, four years ago?
The current one right now is, is dated back 1986.
Well, we just got, wow, we'll talk, okay.
2009.
Don, go to the microphone.
Yeah, Don, listen, behave.
You yelled at other people, too. No, in 2009, Nate, we updated our FEMA maps, but there wasn't any updated study. It was just basically, they cleaned it up a bit, and they, they had the water elevations follow contours a little better, but there wasn't any additional study done. So it's still--
Just revise, okay. For instance, down here at, behind the pump station, that area, that is now, before it was not floodplain, now it is floodplain.
Yeah, they, they just made the floodplain follow the, now that we have the two-foot contours that, so it just cleaned up the draw.
By doing this, this bridge will not change any of the floodplain. Is that what you're saying? Whatever you do to this bridge will not change the floodplain delineations through, through back before, upstream?
So basically, with us, decreasing the hydraulic opening by putting a smaller structure in--
Yes.
It will increase the water surface elevation slightly upstream.
Wow, what do you mean by slightly? Because that is very important.
About, about six inches.
But six inches, well, that could mean 10 feet one way. So I, I'm concerned about that, because we've already gotten, since this 2006, we've already lost the capability to do anything on this, what we used to call an arbor property over here, behind the pump station. You go, that's stone, it's a stone lane. That's, that, when that was updated, that was floodplain. Now that, now that, it made that land almost unusable, which was slated for four or five homes before that, three homes, maybe. So now what will happen when this?
Well, well, I, I guess part of what we need to do is do what's called a backwater analysis--
I would think so.
To determine how far that water goes, that additional water.
Right. That's, that could affect a lot of properties from clear up, the Elks Club replaced a golf course. You don't think so?
Keep going on the report, and see what we need to talk about.
So yeah, basically, we would, we would need to do some additional work. And part of that study, that backwater analysis, is we, we would actually have to go back out, survey another 500 feet upstream, downstream, and then do it, an in-depth hydraulic model for, for the structure and the, and the channel.
You think we're worried because that's, that's going to be correct when we put that in there?
Honestly, yeah. I, I think that slip lining the structure is, is the way to go.
I understand that. But that may change the, everything upstream.
There's a possibility of that, yes. I mean, I can't tell you exactly, I don't, without doing, without doing the study, I'm not quite sure when--
That's, that's a concern that I have, because we have a lot of property owners and a lot of, lot of things are going on upstream, clear up, beyond the golf courses and beyond. So I think we'd need to find out what, are there other alternatives, if you find out that that's going to change the topograph, the topographical area?
So there, there would be another alternative that we could look at, and that would be, we could bore a overflow pipe, basically, through the embankment there adjacent to the existing structure, which would--
Well, let's just, let's just think that out a little bit. Okay.
Help alleviate some of the, the concerns there.
Can I, can I butt in for a second? I can't believe it would ever go past the museum. I, I, I think when you're talking 500 feet upstream with the additional survey, by the time you get 500 feet upstream, you're probably down to zero again, as far as that change.
Right, yeah. I mean, I, I don't have a crystal ball without doing the study. I can't say exactly when, but I, I would suspect that--
Engineering calculations to see if that is, that is, but you're right, if you're, if you're right.
Well, so the, right now, the calculations that we have aren't quite as detailed as what the detailed, so the detailed study might actually show us that the numbers that we have now are conservative.
Okay. You're going to do that.
So, so basically, we would have to come up and do survey 500 feet upstream, downstream, do the full-blown hydraulic model for, for the structure with the channel. And then, based on that information, we would have to show flow easements and obtain flow easements for that increase in, in headwater elevations.
Flow easement?
Flow easements.
Flow easement, oh.
Yes. So basically, for, for us to do that additional work, we would need a supplement of $12,500.
You seven, that's here?
Well, so, so we have the current design fees, which is $35,000. And then we also, so I kind of broke this out for you guys. The supplement would be 20, or $12,500, but we already had the construction engineering services. That's just a time and expense that was in the original contract. So that $72.50 was included in that. I think Amy might have had those, those two added together.
Okay. So what kind of clearance or approval do you need from us to go to the next step?
Basically, I'd just have to prepare a supplement package for you guys and get it up here--
Another supplement bid package?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need approval for, a motion to do that, Amy?
Well, I think Frank--
Oh, Frank?
I have a question, you know, so--
So are, are we looking at, with what all you're saying, are you looking at the full replacement at this point?
Full slip line.
Yeah. But I'm saying, full slip lines. We're not looking at the 200 and whatever it is, thousand repair, right?
We, I mean--
Well, that's what I was going to say. I'm looking at the numbers, and for 260, and we can go to 668, that's a no-brainer. For 20 feet, you pay almost $300,000. For 100 feet, you pay 668. Wow. You know? Why would you even-- Well, they, they bid the first, what was it, 260, whatever, there's, was the 20 feet that you were going to put in?
237.
Yeah, 237 for the 20 feet. But if you look at this one, which is this one right here, you're looking at 668 for 100 feet. And it fixes it permanently.
Yeah.
Okay, well, why would we want to do a 20--
Oh, yeah, well, I've seen that before, exactly.
Yeah, why do we want to, let's just get her done.
Do a little, do a little section, we do the whole--
Right, you do the whole thing, yeah.
Okay.
So I noticed polyurethane seems to be pretty much off the table.
Well--
It's here.
Polyurethane, I guess it all depends on what we're talking about. We, I, I reviewed a couple of different options with the polyurethane grout. One option was a polyurethane grout, injections into the, into the backfill behind the structure. Basically, that would create a uniform envelope around the structure to kind of help stabilize the backfill. That is actually included in this, in this-- in this more detailed cost estimate to do that polyurethane grout. Another option that we looked at would be a semi-structural spray liner. And again, it's semi-structural, it would add some strength, but it's really not a fix. And my issue with that is that if you go in and cover up the bad stuff, we have no idea what's going on back there. I'd rather be able to see it and know what's happening than to cover it up.
And I noticed the low life expectancy on these. I'm a favorite bite in the bullet and doing it right.
Well, the other thing, if you look at 2, 3A, and 3B over here, and his cons, all three of them say not a structural repair, not a full structural repair, not a full structural repair. Well, I would just cross them off because why put something?
I agree. If it's there, we need to spend a little time on it.
We don't need another Band-Aid.
Right. I mean, so the structure is 47 years old, I believe, with a design life back then of 50 years.
We're reaching that point.
We're reaching that point, right.
Would you like a motion, Amy, to amend the engineering document?
I would like a motion to select this option, and then we should amend the engineering to reflect the additional funds, and then you can send me up and I'll sign that proposal.
And that?
Because that has that down here, right?
Yeah, you can.
So we can do a motion to accept what's on this sheet?
Yeah.
And make sure we're looking at the right sheet?
It's the cover sheet, engineer's opinion of probable construction cost. Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That is the 1B on the front page here.
Yep.
Have a motion here?
I make a motion that we accept the engineer's opinion of probable construction costs for the repair of Mary Elizabeth Streets Culver.
Okay, have a motion, a second, we have a discussion. Not hearing any, all in favor, second, if I'm being saying not. Aye, opposed, same sign.
I can't make another comment.
Proceed, young man.
Yeah, you got it.
That's pretty much all I have. I'd be more than happy to answer any other questions you guys have.
Just don't bring us any questions.
We need to spend a moment talking about funding, and Mr. Zill is in the back. We need to talk with him a little bit, too.
Good, thank you, sir. Have a good trip home.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom, you're on the... Mr. Zill is always.
How do you want to pay for $675,000 worth of bridge?
Well, I thought you had the answer to that.
Do we finance it?
Yes.
Make sure I understand. This is something that we can get on a future tip, but we can't get it till that tip comes out, correct? So we could take like a loan out right now to do it, and then when we got it on the tip, take that money to pay the loan back?
That's basically it. But I'll give you a little reasoning behind it. So our tip is a four-year document. It's fiscally constrained, so we don't have a lot of leftover funding sitting around, and usually the funds in the first two years are pretty fully committed to construction projects. So the funding that we've identified tentatively that could be available to help with this structure are out in what we call the third and fourth years of our program. So these are based on federal fiscal years, so just assume that it's two years out.
So the 23 and 24?
Yes, federal 23 and 24. So for the township to proceed now and get this done, taking advantage of the engineering work and that type of stuff that's been done, really the only way we could do this is through something a PENDOT calls a retroactive reimbursement, which operates exactly the way Frank says. The township upfronts the funding, we put funding on the tip, and then the township's reimbursed for 80% of the cost with state funds. We looked at federal sources. The problem with the federal sources is you would have to start the process all over again, and typically a bridge of this structure or a structure of this type going through that process, you're talking three to five years to get federal funds involved. Could not really make use of a lot of the engineering work that you've done so far. So we think that a state funded through a retroactive reimbursement is probably the best, maybe the only way to go to help get the township through this situation in the next few years. So that's a real simple version. There's a lot more involved. You have to enter an agreement with PENDOT, funding has to be committed on the MPO tip by the MPO. You know, there are several steps, but we have done retroactive reimbursements in Center County before. I don't know if we've done one this big in terms of the cost. Typically, they're smaller, maybe 100,000 or less. College Township did one a few years ago. Can't remember the cost of it. It was probably more than 100, but I don't know if it was 600 and some, but it's doable. It can be done. But there are steps that we'll have to go through working with PENDOT and Larson.
Is there a wish to have been, Tom, with respect to the procedure, the process of doing that? What's your role now in terms of?
My role is really on the funding side. So in terms of the detailed procedures, that's between the township, PENDOT, and the engineer to work out. There will be a reimbursement agreement that the township would have to sign in order to provide that. So my role or my job is to see that the funding on the tip can be committed in an appropriate year and in a way that it can be used by the township for the structure.
What's a typical pay-down time spread on a project that big for the township?
For the township?
Yeah.
Well, okay.
What other projects are there? Because, trust me, I've been on here now six years, and I've seen monies on the tip go. Take this here, put this here, you know, make that. So you can say it's going to be on that tip, and you'll get it on that tip, but how, you might get a little bit this year and a little bit next year or something like that. So it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to get it all at once. Am I correct on that?
I think there are ways that it can be, since it's state-funded, federal funds is obligation, state funds is encumbered. I think there's ways it can be encumbered, and I asked this question the other day. So if we have funding in '23, say, in fiscal, federal fiscal '23 on the tip, but the township has moved forward in '22, and then we have maybe some of the funding is even in '24, can it be paid back in a lump sum reimbursement, essentially advanced? And the answer I got was a tentative yes on that. So I think you'd be able to move forward with it. But our goal, Frank, would be to make sure that it's on the tip, committed for the project, and isn't being moved around. But to get to there, we're going to have to do exactly what you said. So right now, we have a federal source that's sitting there that cannot be used, and one of our thoughts is see if we can swap that somewhere else in the Commonwealth with another area to get state funds that we can use so that we can make this commitment. So we are trying to do what we can do here.
Does something you would present it?
No, we'll deal with this until it comes back before the MPO for action in some fashion.
She must have put their name on the bridge for.
I've talked about naming rights for projects.
What kind of formal action do you need from?
Us to proceed, a motion?
We did the motion.
Done?
No, it's just pocket money, so. And Tom, thank God for Tom and Ann, they've been amazing, Ann Messler, so I'll work with them on this.
I just need to know that you're okay interested in this, you know, beyond Amy's level, just so that the elected officials are interested in this.
Do it.
Yeah, let's do it.
Thank you.
Don't hear a lot of options, so we'll do it.
Dan, I have one more thing.
Yes, sir.
This bridge, that's not to do with financing the bridge, but I've had three people mention the fact there's a hiking path down there.
Yeah.
And I think we're this probably forced before, that there's no way to get up, back up to Mary Elizabeth Street to continue that hiking. Now, I don't know whether.
Up the hill.
Yeah, well, maybe even when we're done some construction, maybe we can look at that and figure a way to make a path or steps or something.
Steps.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Planning Commission vacancy, Amy?
Bill Wallace resigned from the commission as he will be moving out of the area. Planning Commission alternate member, Richard Manning, has agreed to fill his unexpired term. I spoke with Chairman Chris Gamble and suggested that we hold off on filling the alternate position that's opening up when Mr. Manning moves up because we're so close to the end of the year. The Planning Commission really only has like two or three meetings left.
We have a long list of aspirant members to that?
We probably will get some, yeah.
Okay, now the word is out.
Yes.
Move to a point, Richard Manning is filling an expired term on the Planning Commission ending December 31, 2024.
Second.
He's an alternative anyhow, who's there, isn't he?
Okay. Got it, so here. All in favor, second, if I'm being saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the Village Parking Committee, anyone volunteer to do that? Bruce?
I mean.
Why do we have to have anybody?
Because you said you wanted to have somebody.
Who said that?
I made a suggestion to not go up.
No, 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 that was something I said. I said we should have somebody from, you know, different spots on.
I'm sure we'll hear from them.
All in favor of Frank?
No, 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 I didn't say I wanted to do it. I said I would, I suggested it would be nice to do that.
I'd quiver an arm.
It would be nice to do that.
It would be nice for you to be there.
But I thought it would be right up your alley.
It is, right, and it's in my alley.
It's on his road, too, so. I thought Bruce, because it's Pine Street.
I think you want someone with doesn't have a, what's the word, conflicting interest.
So Frank's good.
Frank is appointed. All in favor, second, if I'm being saying thank you, Frank. Thank you, Frank. Okay.
No, you have your item that you added to the agenda.
Oh, okay, the fire police issue?
Yeah, Lions Club is requesting use of the Bolzberg Fire Police for traffic control for their chicken feed, October 16th, from 4 to 6 p.m.
So move second, fine, take it. Questions?
Aye.
All in favor, second, if I'm being saying?
I don't have one. Never mind. I think Frank, 3:48, no, no, this one, right.
Everyone ordered their chicken.
No, I didn't, because I forgot all about it.
Are you on the mailing list that Pete Trump has?
I don't know.
He says.
My wife probably got it, I don't know. I didn't, well, maybe I am, maybe she called it in, I don't know.
Chicken. Okay, managers' report, Amy, any?
I'll just briefly mention, because we've gotten some calls about this, the Bolzberg Pike, the State College Borough Water Authority replaced the water line from Apollo down to Lee this year, and then they're going to continue on. Eventually, they're going to replace the whole thing down to Bull Avenue. I was getting complaints from residents about the poor ride quality on the road. So we met with them. We have the plan for the budget for next year that we're going to actually pave the Bolzberg Pike from Kimport to Nittany View Park. So we didn't think it made sense to have them come in and top that section of road when we're just going to mill it up. So we let them leave that at base. We had them fix from Lee to Kimport, and the ride quality's gotten much better. We had them put top there because that section won't be paved until the next section of our pavement, and then they're going to continue on down the road. So we will be paving the section that's probably the worst, which is from Kimport to the park, I always want to say the Pike, Kimport to the park, next year.
As you turn on the insurance, $1,000?
Yeah, and also it only went up 0.8%. That's unfair.
0.8, good, good. Anything else, gentlemen?
No.
Number seven is the two meetings for the budget. You see those? Okay, let's do the vouchers. Give me a number, someone.
Let's go through the vouchers. In the amount of $197,067.88.
Second.
Second.
Okay, questions? No questions on all those big expenditures, okay? All in favor, second, if I'm being saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you. Committee reports, Executive Committee set the agenda for the forum. Public Service Committee met, and we talked, we spent a lot of time talking about the adding a housing option to the, to the new committee, and talked about that for about an hour.
Housing, what did you say? Housing options?
Expanding housing choices and opportunities to the new Lucy Committee as an agenda I might be talking about, so. Then we talked about the organization of the Center Region Comprehensive Plan, a new kind of design they're going to put together. We talked about some key land use transportation committee infrastructure challenges, and that was it. About a two-and-a-half-hour meeting, so it was a good session. So solar power purchasing, we talked about it a little bit earlier. The RFP was let, the school board agreed to that suggestion, and the documents should be signed, and we should begin working on it. Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Basically, we spent our whole meeting talking about, this was just last week, a survey that COG staff put together for all the COG employees regarding COVID vaccination status and what it would take to get unvaccinated people to get vaccinated. Would they get vaccinated? If this happened, would they get vaccinated? That happened, whatever. Anyway, it seems like our overall vaccination rate's pretty good. It's close to 80%. There were a few nonrespondents to the survey, but the survey was over 90% response rate. So that's pretty good. And so basically, at this point in time, we just think we're going to encourage people, and we're not going to go through any drastic measures in the COG to try to get more people vaccinated.
Good, thank you. Mr. Graham, you can take the next three. Finance, climate action, and heritage.
Finance, we have completed all of our budget meetings. We discussed all the budgets with all of the agencies, and for the first time almost ever, we're going to have to have a wrap-up committee to discuss some expenses on the budget that's, what we're going to try to eliminate or we're going to keep in there. Might as well go over them. One of them is whether you're going to hire two people or one person this next year. We agreed for assisted finance person because we asked them a lot of things, but then they came up with a second HR person. There was a three-to-three tie on that, so we have to discuss that. Another one is whether we should allot $75,000 in case, in case the Climate Action Committee wants to hire a consultant, which they don't know that they will. The other one is $100,000 in air quality, and the building, they can't, and they have not been able to, they may tell us this Thursday what, how the air quality is now, why it's so bad, and it's been $100,000 on that. If not, that, I will advocate dropping that from the budget. So those are three things that we disagree on. Everything else is pretty much agreeable. The budget, as it stands, is going to go up six, about six and a half percent, which is 3% more than it ever has before. And to the members of the fires, with you in the fires, it's going to go up 7%. So it's going to be a heated discussion. So far, it's been very civil, but I suspect that this, I think it's this Thursday, there's going to be some contentious there, and the idea is to get an agreement, even though that only has to pass the majority. So two municipalities cannot agree to do the budget because it'll pass, but I don't think that's what we want. We want to reach an agreement on most things and see what we do. So it'll be interesting, come Thursday afternoon, where are we on the budget? There's probably, there's one other thing, too. I forget what it was we were going to discuss, it doesn't matter. So we'll know next week what our budget, our budget's going to look like. We're very fortunate, Amy said our reimbursement is down, medical reimbursement's down, so that eases the budget hit there a little bit, so there we stand.
We always had that 3% limit for years, and, you know, it would go up, and we always stayed, seemed to be able to stay under that 3%. And we realized a couple years ago that with costs going up, we really, it was unrealistic to have that on there. And, you know, and Jim Steph still was able to do it pretty good. Now we have a new director, and all of a sudden, we've jumped six. And I'm, I sit on the Facilities Committee where a lot of this stuff gets talked about, and how much we need to do this and need to do that. My point is this, as a township, one of our biggest threats, in my opinion, to our budget and tax increases is coming from in there, because I think we manage what we do out here quite well. Should we consider, in the future, or even this year, or whatever, consider that we put a limit on what our COG contribution should be increased each year? I just want to throw that out for food for thought, but that's something that I've been thinking about, and, you know, what happens if they come back and say, hey, it's 10% this year? And if you talk to every, the one thing I've noticed from Facilities, I've heard since the first Facilities meeting, the staff in there, they want a new building, and they keep talking about, what are we going to do with this building? We need to improve. I know, but I'm just, I'm just saying that, yeah, but I'm just saying that I think we should figure out, this may come to our, something we have to take action on. And like Bud said, I don't want to stand at a budget meeting and cause a riff if it's something we can do internally here that says, hey, we're only going to support this much increase each year. That's just something for you guys to think about.
Well, it's certainly a possibility. What happened over the years, they did put, a couple years, three years, they did put a restraint on it, but I was against that because I felt that if, that we were being fiscally responsible enough, that if there was an expense needed in there, we would give it, we would do that. But we'd also keep this budget even. Now, I agree with you, and I'm a COG person from Die Hard, I'm a member of the Pennsylvania COG Association, in fact, I was president of the Association a couple of times. So I am a COG person. The reason for COG is we can share expenses and keep the cost reasonable. Whenever all of a sudden we start, our administration starts going crazy without, without, without anything else to back that anything else to back that up, it's a problem. And, and, yes, and I fear that if it keeps this at six, seven, eight percent a year, that's going to really affect our budgets, our bottom line here. So far, no municipality that I'm, that I, that I've pinned down has ever had to raise their taxes because of the COG increase, and it was always kept at two and three, maybe four, but always, always a reasonable reason for it, up a little bit down to next year. So if this trend continues, yes, Frank, I think we need to, as a COG, to decide where we want that budget to go every year. We're, we're, we're growing fast. We're growing real fast. We got our parks and records just growing, and, and as I think it should be, because that's what people want. They want quality of life, they want all these park directions, and they do pay for themselves. The pools are paying for themselves. That's, and the other, the COG is paying for itself, and we're making money on COG. But you're right, somewhere, somewhere along the line, if we can't, if it gets to a point where by their budget sessions, we can't have unanimous decision, or at least unanimous when some of this and some of that, we can, we can, we can fudge a little bit, disagree with this, agree with this. Come up, if we can't, if it's three to three, or, or, or four, four, what's it, four, three to five or three to three, whatever, I guess depends what the half moon is in there or not. I think we have a problem with that. We should need to look at it. Maybe we need to set, have the COG set a, set a budget, and the administration meet that budget. Right now, they, when they present something, if, if it's reasonable, it's looked like we'd do it, we can do it, but we, but that means, but we got to keep our budget reasonable. We can't be sending, we made a mistake with the library a couple of years ago. She wanted eighty thousand dollars for this and a hundred thousand. We gave it to her just in case we might want this, new furniture for this. They didn't spend it. Now, where did that money go? So the, the things we have to guard against is give them money in case we need it. Well, we, that, that comes back to us in quarterly, quarterly payments. We pay those payments. If they don't use it, where does it go? So those are things we have to watch out for. So we'll know, know better, and the time to talk about this is, is in May, June of next year, when, when they first started the program plan, where do we, where do we want to set a budget at? So we, we'll see.
But that's just something I've been thinking.
Well, it, it's concerning to me, too, but I was against setting a limit because maybe they, maybe there's something they really wanted, and, but, but maybe they need another little two, 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 two tenths of a percent or something, but now we're looking at six percent, seven percent a year every three or four years. That's, that's a chunk of change. And, and one of the biggest fear is that we get administration having, we don't, that's not one of the services we can make things out of.
Well, like you said about the firemen, I saw it on the facilities, they presented what they wanted in the fire thing, and when I was asked for my comment, my exact comment was, thank God I have Bollesburg Fire Company and we don't have to deal with that.
They're, they're looking at probably about eight percent increase a year with the fire. If they include, if they include fire in, in their budget, it's eight percent in ten years, that's eighty percent increase in your budget. Well, anyhow, it, I hopefully will work out, hopefully this Saturday, I guess it's Thursday, we'll be able to come up with an agreement, at least, we have to come up with an agreement because we have to present a budget to the general forum. Well, I want to present one that we can vote for. I'm hoping to do.
Climate Action Sustainability.
Bud?
I will have Amy Farkas report, because she filled in for me today because I was, I don't want to.
You want to do the Heritage?
I felt that she knew what she was doing.
Yes, so I attended the Climate Action Sustainability Committee meeting today. They talked about the draft resolution to adopt the Climate Action Plan and looked at some language with that, but then we spent some time talking about the bulk waste postponement, and I expressed the concerns that Supervisor Haymester and I had talked about, which was that the decision was made unilaterally without committee involvement, and that they had in the past involved the committee in discussions about, you know, when they were going to allow the Recycling and Refuge Authority to start work earlier or not allow that, and that we, the fact that we also had had bulk collection last year in the height of the lockdown. So I think they understood the concerns. One of the discussion points coming out of that was to develop a policy so that if we do run into this again in the future, that there will be a policy in place similar to what we did with Trick or Treat Night.
I suspect that they were not quite truthful, I saw that bulk waste.
Yeah, I think there's a lot more going on there than ECI.
Vaccination rate is so low.
Yeah, I don't think that's it.
Well, I don't think that's the answer.
Because I, I have a friend who's a public works director out in the western part of the state, and they're having a terrible time with their holler, and they're trying to raise prices and all kinds of things. It's, I, I think the vaccine is a convenient excuse.
And bringing people in and putting crew in the truck and all kinds of stuff. Heritage Museum, Mr. Bud?
We have, they have done a lot of work over there. Not much is going on. We're going to open up, I hope, soon. Well, I think they're open now on Saturdays. We've got, we're building a new, a new display over there. It's, it's, it's a progression of work.
Thank you. Land use, uh, fine. For several.
You attended that one because I was at PML, but we, MPO did meet, and we did talk about, there were several things that the transportation set aside, it's mostly for bike passes and stuff, and we've had projects, but that's one, you have to put projects in and get bid, but they updated us on that. The twenty-three, twenty-six tip process has been started, which is what you just heard about tonight. Just to give you an idea, roads and bridges, we are allocated forty-three million, two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars for that four-year period. To give you a perspective, the first year I was on, it was a seventy-some thousand million. The second year was about sixty-five million, the second one I did, and it's been dropping ever since. So this year, we're at forty-three is what we're getting for the tip. And that's just the starting with, we're putting projects up on it, and it'll start going through a process of eliminating, adding, prioritizing, and then we start looking at where can we get money. And what you heard, Tom, that it's, it's monopoly. I mean, they, I'll take it from over here, I'll, I'll push this up there and bring that money over here, and I'm, I'm glad I don't have that job.
Squeaky wheels.
Oh, well, it's not just that. Sometimes it's a safety issue. It could be anything could come up.
Is that already submitted?
Well, I'm not done yet.
Oh, you're, oh, you're.
Okay, there was one, well, we had, we had Connector, but there was one, one other thing I wanted to bring up.
No.
We have, we also, for the fiscal year, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four United Plan, Working Plan that we're working on, and we will adopt this year. That plan, this, and, and we do these all the time. We have different names for them. What I figured out, and finally, you, this plan has to be done so you get some federal funding. There's a federal funding program, but you've got to have a United Plan Working Program. If you don't have one, you aren't eligible for the program. If you don't have this, like, if you notice, we're always approving one of those, that's because they're mandatory to get the different funding, so that's what really happened in MPO. Sorry, Denny. And, and as far as facilities, we, we've done a really good job with facilities as far as streamlining our meetings. All of our project, now, all of our project updates are now in our, our informational files, it's online, you know, that information thing that we have through, that you, everything's on there now, so you can go in and look at that anytime. Millbrook Marsh, I think, Bud, you guys talked about it in facilities.
Yes.
Yeah, as far as, I understand where we're at right now is we need two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars to do.
Forty-five.
Is it forty-five? It was, but it's, it's over two-hundred thousand. We need to do the study because if we don't do the study, DEP won't let it, we've got to do it to complete the DEP process. But before we can even start moving boards on that project, that has to be done. So if we don't accept that this year, in that, in this year's budget, and we say we do it next year, that, that puts that project out almost two years.
The study is two-hundred-and-forty thousand?
Yes, it's about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
The finance committee, the study is two-hundred-and-forty-five, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars.
To determine?
To determine if, what we have to do there. There's all this, all the land and fly guys have to get in, the bat guys have to get in there. Everybody has to go in, and then, then we can put this out to bid, but by the time that, there's so many restrictions on that, the study, that boardwalk may be two or three million dollars.
It's going to be, it's going to be three.
Now, is it worth, is, are we going to do it? Are we going to do it for two, three million dollars? If we're not, let's not even spend the money on the study. That's, that's something that I, I think we have to decide.
Well, I think the one thing that we've, we've heard in the facilities committee, and we've seen, they've, they've done something, that's one of the biggest requests for, for like teachers and people in the area that, that take their kids over there. They can't walk on the boardwalk. They've only got that short loop now because the rest of it's shut down, and the way that is over there, the rest of it could be shut down in six months. You know, you don't know how that's going to hold up. But it is something that the community wants. But it's, but it's, it's in a wetland, it's, it's just in a bad situation, and it's been in forever.
It's this story also. Who was telling the truth on this? Are we not allowed back there without doing, we don't know that for sure, what we're allowed and what not allowed to do.
Well, I think, I think that what they said, it's not that we're allowed in there or not allowed in there. What it is, is we have to replace that decking. It's, it's all buckled and some of it's falling.
Some of it is, yeah.
And, and that's the problem. We can go in there and replace what's there as far as, but we can't mess with the structure. Well, part of the reason it's failing is some of those pylons are, they're, they're going up and down because of the hydraulics of what's under there. So that's the issue, because it's almost, it takes a full replacement right now, and